Okay, ladies, let me know when we're recording here. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City of Inglewood Regular City Council Meeting. Please prepare for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
This evening, I actually would like to read part of the invocation at the very first Congress on September 7th, 1774. "Gracious heavenly Father, be thou present, O God of wisdom, and direct the councils of this honorable assembly; enable them to settle things on the best and surest foundation, that the scene of blood may be speedily closed, that order, harmony, and peace may be effectually restored, and truth and justice, religion and piety prevail and flourish among the people. Preserve the health of their bodies and vigor of their minds; shower down on them and the millions they here represent such temporal blessings as thou seest expedient for them in this world, and crown them with everlasting glory in the world to come. All this we ask in the name and through the merits of Jesus Christ, thy Son, and our Savior. Amen."
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Members Olson?
Good evening.
Barrantyne?
Here.
Gillett?
Present.
Martinez?
Present.
Russell?
Present.
Yates?
Present.
And Mayor Jefferson?
Here.
All seven present.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, that is, consideration of minutes of previous session. I would entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, we accept the 19 September 2016 minutes as presented.
Still move. Coming second.
Thank you. Any comments or corrections? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record goes seven ayes.
Briefly, if counsel will indulge me, before we move on to Agenda Item 6, we do have a special guest in our audience, Mr. Jim Ruffel from JW Ruffel Metals Foundry, Inc., is here, I believe, this evening. Is Jim here this evening? Excellent. If you would mind coming to the podium, I would really appreciate that, and any other, your son or any other representatives. I did want, I did hear from the community that there was an incident in the City of Inglewood last week, and Jim was able to help save his life by stopping a person from choking. And I did want to present this certificate to Jim, and I'll read it here for the record. Certificate of Recognition for Extraordinary Personal Action, presented to Jim Ruffel. As Mayor of the City of Inglewood, I do certify that at this October 3rd, 2016, meeting of the Inglewood City Council, Jim Ruffel has hereby presented a certificate of recognition for using lifesaving skills that saved a human life. Signed, Joe Jefferson, Mayor of the City of Inglewood. It's really an honor to have folks like that in our community who are willing to help up and step up and help their neighbors. I hear so often from folks in our community that the small-town value and vibe of our community and willingness to help each other out is what separates us from other communities. So, thank your father, and thank you for your business, being here eighty years in the City of Inglewood. Please, please give an opportunity for everybody else to shake their hand.
I would like to recognize, I appreciate Sandy Shue bringing this to our attention, and I always appreciate a retired firefighter saving somebody's life in our community. Thank you very much, and for being a business owner in our community.
That's right. Thank you for indulging me, everyone. Moving on to Agenda Item 6, this is recognition of scheduled public comment. Our first speaker is Scott Gorsky from Citizens for Inglewood Schools. We'll address counsel regarding the November 2016 election bond issue. Mr. Gorsky, doesn't look like he's here this eve—
(audience cheering)
Oh, jeez, I didn't see you. You snuck up on me. Welcome back, Mr. Gorsky.
Thank you very much. I do apologize. Please bear with me here for just a minute. As I'm getting things—oh, my God.
Uh-oh. You need help.
This doesn't work. I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna punt. All right. My name is Scott Gorsky. No, it's okay. I got it. I got it. I got it. All right.
Good evening. My name is Scott Gorsky. Thank you very much, council members, staff, citizens of Inglewood. My name is Scott Gorsky. I have been living in the community—oh, 4453 South Cherokee Street, G-O-R-S-K-Y, and I have been living in the community of Inglewood since the year 2002. It has been a great experience for myself and my family. I'm very happy to say that currently, my daughter, who is four and a half years old, is attending Maddox Early Childhood Center, right down the street, and I am very happy to see some of the fruits of my labor, as I did spend eight years on the Board of Education within the city of Inglewood. I am also an educator for the last fifteen-plus years. My work has brought me to thirty-plus schools within six to seven districts throughout the Denver metro area on a very consistent and regular basis. The reason why I'm here today is because recently, I was able to facilitate a long-range facilities planning committee that consisted of approximately twenty-eight community members. We spent over twenty-two hours touring facilities, asking questions, asking for further information, and really trying to get down to what the needs of our students currently are. And I must say that I did bring some of these pictures, and I will be more than happy to just line them up here in the very front of the room for you, but—
What I was able to bring was, these are pictures of our current facilities, whether they be the library, okay? So, on the left-hand side is what we're currently faced with. On the right-hand side is what we could be presented with if we were to pass 3D and 3E. These are cafeterias. Many of our schools that we currently have, we have cafeterias where we basically run three hours of lunch. The reason why we run three hours of lunch is because we are currently unable to serve our students appropriately within the environment and given the current facilities that we do have. Next thing is, is that our gymnasiums, our gymnasiums are quite small. We do share facilities with the city and county of, the city of Inglewood. We do share those facilities, and I will say that our facilities are very small. We have to have many specials, so many rotations of gym. The facilities are just not there. And most importantly, here is our classrooms. Our classrooms are not in great shape. We have classrooms that make a lot of noise. It makes it very non-conducive for our students to learn and to achieve the way that they should be achieving. And then, last but not least, we have our playgrounds, which many of our community members are currently utilizing when we are outside regular school hours, okay? I'm here to basically say to everyone that there is a lot of traffic going on within next door. A lot of that traffic is not supported by facts and information. I would invite any and all of you to visit the county assessor's office. You can see what property taxes you are currently paying. We do have the Senior Homestead Exemption Act, which basically allows for seniors to write off the first $200,000, fifty percent of that amount, if there is financial hardship. The other thing that I wanted to say is that I believe that when I was Board President, I was a good steward of the money. If you currently look at our tech facility, okay, our tech campus and our rebuilt Colorado's finest, we are offering many 21st-century opportunities for our students, and it is about time, because we promised the taxpayers and the community at the time we went after our first bond and mill, that we would do something to approve upon our elementary schools. And that is what we are trying to do with this bond and mill levy. The other thing that I would just like to say is that there has been a lot of traffic, as I said, outside of meetings, outside of, you know, just the general area, and that I would invite each and every one of you, council members, along with the regular community, to attend either on October 6th at Charles Hay World School at 6:00 PM, or October 12th at Cheryl Lynn at 6:00 PM, to attend a community forum where we will be able to answer any questions that citizens might have. And to end it all, it's approximately $6.50 per assessed value of $100,000. And as we all know right now, the assessed value for what our homes are currently selling for is drastically different, and that can only ratchet up every two years. So, with that, I would just welcome the opportunity for any of you to ask any questions that you may have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gorsky. See if we have any questions from counsel for you at this time.
Any questions?
Seeing none, I appreciate you coming and speaking this evening.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dwayne Tucker, also from Citizens for Inglewood Schools. Will address counsel regarding the November 2016 election bond issue. Is Mr. Tucker here? Okay. We'll move on to our next speaker in that case, which is Scott Gilbert, Inglewood resident. Will address counsel regarding council meeting start time. Good evening, Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Scott Gilbert, 4425 South Fox. You know, when you came out of the last meeting, and there was some talk about starting meetings at 6:00, I did so much great math. I checked the start times of forty-six council meetings in the seven-county metro area. I ran the demographics of different cities based on their starting times, and then you came through with an ordinance that starts it at 7:00 instead. So, you gave me a pretty good math workout, but anyway, I think that starting time of 7:00 would work okay. With Inglewood's working population, and we are, not to be a loaded term, but largely a working-class city, we have a significantly lower median household income than cities with meetings that start earlier. People in this city work long hours. They get home, if they want to come here and take part, they, a 6:00 start just really wouldn't work. A 7:00 start should work considerably better for them. 7:00 start would put it squarely in line with not only the majority of cities around the metro area, twenty-five out of forty-six, but it would, it would also accommodate our citizens, and I guess I'm not using up my five minutes, but that's about it. I hope you go with the 7:00, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Gilbert?
If anybody wants to see my great math, I've got it. All right, thanks.
Thank you for those efforts, for speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Brian Brockhousen, Inglewood resident. Will address counsel regarding Title VII. Good evening, Mr. Brockhousen.
Evening, counsel. Brian Brockhousen, 4810 South Fox. I'm gonna use a few hypotheticals tonight, so I ask that you bear with me a little bit. Ms. Martinez, my question for you would be, how would you feel if your father, who has bad knees, one's been replaced, the other one needs it, has a rapidly deteriorating hip, has crushed back? He can't sleep at night without oxygen because he has heart problems. He has a hole in his lung. At times, he can't even move room to room throughout his home because of the pain. He has a caretaker who loves him, cares for him, is there all the time, will stop at nothing to be sure his needs are met and that he's comfortable. And the city comes along and tells your father, "We don't care about you. We don't care about your problems. Your caretaker has to go." Mr. Yates, your mother, struggled with lifelong obesity because as a result, suffers extreme damage to her bones and the joints in her body. Has diabetes, neuropathy in her feet and legs. At times, she can hardly move throughout her own home because the pain is so great. She has a caretaker who loves her and will stop at nothing to be sure her needs are met and that she's comfortable. Yet, the city comes along and says, "We don't care about you or your problems. Your caretaker has to go." Dr. Olson, say you have a brother. He has a kidney disease. His body mass produces stones. The only thing is, these aren't stones at all. They're little crystals with sharp points and serrated edges. They rip and tear and lacerate the inside of his body as they pass through. You've seen him pass stones up to three-eighths of an inch in diameter. He's had dozens of surgeries because these stones, these crystals, grow to over an inch in diameter, and they block his kidneys, his ureter. He has a caretaker who loves him, will stop at nothing to be sure that he's taken care of, his needs are met. At times, he can't even stand at the sink to do a handful of dishes. Yet, the city comes and says, "We don't care about your problems. Your caretaker has to go." I hope none of this becomes a reality of what I've said tonight, but it's my reality. That's my father, my mother, and my brother. That's what I deal with on a day-to-day basis. Yet, they're being told their caretaker has to go? By not moving on this, by not voting on this, I've got—this is a brief from Rice in representation of Inglewood. It says, "The plaintiffs are wrongly seeking supplement what should be an issue for legislation, decision, discussion, and action." By legislation, you are our legislation, and by tonight, by not standing against this horrible piece of legislation and not calling to repeal it, Mr. Gillett, you are personally telling my family, "I don't care about you. I don't care about your problems. Your caretaker has to go." Mrs. Martinez, you are personally telling my family, "I don't care about you. We don't care about your problems. Your caretaker has to go." Mr. Yates, you are personally telling my family, "I don't care about you. I don't care about your problems. Your caretaker has to go." Mayor Jefferson, you're personally telling my family, "We don't care about you. We don't care about your problems. Your caretaker has to go." Dr. Olson, you too are personally telling my family, "We don't care about you. We don't care about your problems. Your caretaker has to go." Ms. Barrantyne, you're telling my family personally that I don't care about you. I don't care about your problems. Your caretaker has to go. Ms. Russell, you are personally telling my family, "I don't care about you. I don't care about your problems. Your caretaker has to go." I'm asking this council tonight to please take a stand against the piece of this bad legislation that's been in front of you since the 1st of August. You guys have seen the research. There's not been one person on the residency in Inglewood since the inception that has acted out at one of your schools, parks, a swimming pool. Not one. We've been challenged. Mr. Elstrom has stood here and said, "I would like to see people birth cattle." Supposedly, there's opposition out there, people who would stand firmly against this, but we've yet to see anybody. I've yet to get anything out of my community, out of the supporters, other than support. Your constituents are out here tonight. I just hope that as they come up and listen, or speak, that they will listen. We'll have some ears and some compassion, please. I've grown in empathy. That's why I'm here. That's why I'm strong. Can you? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let me see if we have any questions from counsel for you. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is John Odenmeyer? Odenheimer, excuse me. I still may have butchered that. I'll leave you an opportunity to correct me on the record, but will address counsel regarding residency restrictions for sex offenders. Good evening, sir.
That was perfect the second time, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Odenheimer. I live at 3973 East Castilla Avenue in Centennial, Colorado. I was here on August 15th, so I won't go into detail tonight regarding my background. However, as a reminder, I want to let you know, or remind you, that I was with the probation department in the 18th Judicial District, supervising our Adult Sex Offender Supervision Unit, when the Inglewood residency restrictions for sex offenders were born. Tonight, I would like to take you back to that event in 2006. We had a sixty-something-year-old sex offender who sexually assaulted his step-grandson, and during the pendency of the investigation, he intimidated and threatened the child's parents. Now, keep in mind that the child's parents were his stepdaughter and her husband. He was charged in two felony cases, one for sexual assault on a child by a person in a position of trust, and the other for victim-witness intimidation. He took a plea in both cases and was sentenced to two or three years in prison on the victim intimidation case, and he was sentenced to ten years to life probation on the child sexual assault case. Also at sentencing, he was designated as a sexually violent predator. So, prior to being released from prison, a meeting was held at the Inglewood Police Department to begin the planning process for the sexually violent predator community notification meeting that would take place in Inglewood, because the plan was for this offender to temporarily reside in Inglewood while being supervised by both probation and parole on a GPS ankle monitor and in sex offender treatment. Present at the meeting were two representatives from probation, two from parole, the sex offender management board, the treatment program he would be attending, a victim representative, the Inglewood Police Chief, as well as various other personnel from the police department, and city manager Gary Sears. At the meeting, as the meeting progressed, Mr. Sears was noticeably upset. At one point, he looked at me and said, "My switchboard's gonna light up like a Christmas tree when residents find out this sex offender is living in Inglewood." Mr. Sears was livid. As it turned out, the offender never was released into the community at that time for different reasons, and the community notification meeting never happened regardless. Very soon after the Inglewood planning meeting, Mr. Sears initiated actions which resulted in the sex offender residency restrictions which exist in the city of Inglewood today. Fear and anger. That's how this thing got started. Fear and anger. Fear over what residents might think, and anger over not being able to do anything about it. It's been going on for ten years now, and it's time to stop. It's just time to stop. It shouldn't be about fear and anger. These are not standards on which to govern. There's no research to show that any community is safer with sex offender residency restrictions. Ninety percent of child sexual abuse is perpetrated by family members or others known to the child or his or her family, and the strangers who perpetrate ten percent of the child's sexual abuse don't do it in their own communities. Community programs aimed at enlightening adults and children are effective in teaching all of us how to keep children safe. Proactive efforts are helpful. Passive constraints are not productive. The recidivism rate among supervised sex offenders in treatment and post-treatment is very small. Residency restrictions make no one safer. They do nothing to make sex offenders more accountable or better suited to reintegrate safely in the community. The best way to achieve accountability and community safety is for the offender to be engaged in supervision and treatment and to register in the community in which he lives. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. See if we have any questions from counsel for you. Councilmember Barrantyne?
Did you say you were present at that meeting in 2006?
Yes, ma'am. I called the meeting.
Was that the case where, that the person—was that the case that initiated the 2006? Are you saying that that was the one?
Yes, ma'am, it was.
That was the person that was supposed to be placed at the Hilltop?
Motel on South Broadway. I don't remember the name.
Okay. How did that person violate their probation, then, because they never went in?
Well, he was in prison on the victim intimidation case. He was to be on probation for ten years to life consecutive to the prison case. So, we arranged with parole for parole, for him to be released from prison—I forget which facility he was in—to the diagnostic facility in Denver, and that parole would go and pick him up from the diagnostic facility in Denver and bring him to the parole office in Inglewood. Myself and the probation officer who was going to be supervising him went to the Inglewood parole office to meet with him to issue his terms and conditions of probation. The treatment—or someone from treatment—also went to that office. The offender was still in denial. He was in denial when he went to court. He was in denial when he went to prison, and he was still in denial when he went from the diagnostic facility to the Inglewood parole office on that morning. Parole then designated him to be in violation of the parole agreement, and they violated his parole—not probation, but his parole, and he went back to prison shortly thereafter. He got out later on, and we in probation had made the decision that because—I had mentioned that he was in the 18th district. He was sentenced out of the 18th Judicial District.
At this point, and I don't mean to interrupt, but at that point, then it was past the ordinance, that was past the time for the ordinance for Inglewood?
That was the day after the meeting, the planning meeting, that Mr. Sears was livid at.
Okay.
Okay? So, he never did get out in the community at that time, but it was immediately after the meeting that Mr. Sears initiated whatever he initiated to get to the residency restrictions that exist today. When he ended up getting released, a year or so after that, he went into a facility in Castle Rock because he was actually sentenced out of Douglas County, and—
It's not his case I'm interested in. I'm interested in, considering I was on council at the time, whether I was lied to or not, and for the information that we were given at the time. And so, is it possible for you to provide—I've been told several stories about what happened with it, but exactly at the time, when we did that emergency ordinance, whether or not he had already violated his probation, or whether he was still possibly coming in because it seemed to all happen, just from my own edification. If you happen to have that information, I'd appreciate it if you'd provide it to the city. That was all.
I don't, I don't know, madam, when your, when the presentation was made to your council. I can tell you that the meeting—he was released to the parole office the day after our planning meeting at the Inglewood Police Department and never got to the street.
Yeah, if you could just provide me with that date if you have that.
I don't have that date.
Oh, you don't? Okay. All right.
And I am retired from the probation department, so I can't go back and pull any of my old records.
All right.
Thank you again for speaking this evening, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Susan Walker. Will address counsel regarding sex offender registry. Is Mrs. Walker in the audience this evening?
We skipped one.
Oh, Coeene Dickerson. Yeah, jeez, thank you for helping keep track a little bit. Sorry, Mrs. Dickerson. Coeene Dickerson, Inglewood resident, will address counsel regarding communications. Good evening.
Coeene Dickerson, 2835 South Pennsylvania, here in Inglewood, and good evening. Communications and organization and actions in the city are not just misleading, but are somewhat out of control and not working to the benefit of and trust by the citizens. When a political consultant can take over city publications—which is not part of his contract—spin the facts and in at least two instances outright lie about council's actions and reasons on a bond issue, presumably to gain extra fees, that is very wrong. The city has allowed this to happen and failed to act and correct the initial mistake in contracting with Mile High in the first place. I am afraid that the newest proposed communications consultant cahoots—which has a negative connotation on the name altogether—will prove equally out of control of anyone. Transparency, truth, and valid communication will take a backseat to lipstick, makeup, and spin. In addition, the recent front page of The Villager calls control of city communications into question and raises ethical concerns about the two council members quoted as making the accusations. But the most troublesome communications, actions, and contradictions and unnecessary costs are caused by legal staff, specifically the contradictory words of and avoidance and outright refusal to execute the direction of council by Dugan Comer. I recently heard him say in council that he would refer the iBake license revocation to a service attorney because it won't cost us anything. We have a hefty premium for this service and $150,000 deductible per claim, so it is not free in any way. The most current statements that call Comer's legal competence into question are his statements and actions regarding Ordinance 34 and the unnecessary four-year Ryle Court action and the related but quite different Brockhousen case. The current issue is Brockhousen, which Comer's direction to police brought forward. Comer said recently, "Council cannot tell police what ordinances they can enforce and which they can't." Yet, Comer does so per police communications, and his own actions and inactions is verified by documentation. and inactions is verified by documentation. Comer said that he did not know the police were now enforcing Ordinance 34, yet he told them the Colorado Supreme Court told them they were free to do so, and approved the wording of the letter evicting over fifty persons without due process or examination of the facts. This is also verifiable by documentation and council meetings. Comer said long after the Colorado Supreme Court answered the certified question from the Tenth Circuit Court, "We won. Victory for Home Rule. That is a spin that has no basis in reality or the Tenth Circuit final decision. What the Supreme Court said in Paragraph 34 was the city interpreted Home Rule too broadly, that just because the city has regulated does not mean the regulation is exempt from state considerations. The civil rights violation of Ordinance 34 were not addressed in any way. Ryle's complaint only asked for cessation of prosecution for continued violations of Ordinance 34, to which the city agreed after we spent so much money and time. The city's appeal was dismissed on mootless grounds. The only reason the lawsuit was filed, the Brockhausen lawsuit was filed the day after the moratorium failed was because of the public comments of Comer, Gelatin Yates the previous night. Despite Comer's claim that the city cannot take action on questionable Ordinance 34 without undermining pending litigation, which he brought about, that is what can and should be done now and should have been done in 2012. The ordinance is overly broad, violates civil rights, is a taking of property, and the residency requirements pertain only to the perceived danger of violent sexual predators, or pedophiles, excuse me. But that concern is very misplaced in general because court orders take care of that possibility case by case, as is shown in the recent public case of a counselor pastor who touched a thirteen-year-old inappropriately and now cannot have contact even with his own minor children. Settle this case immediately. Revice the ordinance to allow the now law-abiding citizens under close supervision to remain in their homes in stable and supportive environments. Don't let Mr. Comer continue failing to do the job he is being overpaid to do and apparently cannot do without resorting to lining his and Tom Rice's pockets at taxpayer expense."
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if we have any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking tonight. Our next speaker was Susan Walker. Thank you for your patience there. Will address counsel regarding sex offender registry. Good evening, Ms. Walker.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to stay aware of this clock tonight. I think last time I kind of lost track of that. I prepared in a number of different ways, and I think what I'm going to do is just tell you why, really why I'm here besides the fact that I would love to see Brian get some help with his particular issue. I'm the mother of a now forty-year-old man who was twenty-four at the time that he committed a sexual assault. He was raised in a good family, a church-going family. He had a lot of gifts and talents that he could have used, but got involved in drugs when he was in high school and got started in a bad, bad direction with some bad kids and ended up at twenty-four committing a sexual assault. We have now been in the system, our family, for fifteen years. And my son started out in work release. He ended up going after work release to probation in the community in Jefferson County and to treatment, and he failed on treatment because he was using meth and a number of other substances that were very damaging to him. He did not reoffend sexually. He never reoffended sexually, but he went to prison. He was never offered drug and alcohol treatment. He, he went to prison and he was sentenced under the lifetime sentence here in Colorado to four, four years to life. He spent five and a half years in prison. He's been out now for eight on parole, one of the few people that was getting out at that time, getting out of DOC on the Lifetime Act, which only came into being in 1998. And he has just done a fantastic job on parole. He came out of prison a non-drinker, a nonsmoker, a non-drugger, and with lots of very lofty goals. He has now earned a bachelor's degree since he's been out in biblical studies. He's, he's working on a master's degree and has his own prison ministry called The Cell Church. You can look it up on the website if you'd like to do that, and you'll see my son, Mark Walker. He also has bought his own townhome in the city of Westminster and works for defense attorney in Littleton and has been there ever since he's been out of prison. He was just granted a completment of sex offense-specific treatment, two years early before he can ask to get off parole, which is ten years. There are ten-year parole for lifetime sex offense conviction and a twenty-year parole. My son has a ten-year parole, so he's been out for eight years, and we just had a party at his treatment program for the fact that he was able to kind of set the tone and hopefully open a door for others coming to be able to also get off of treatment early before their parole is finished. I wanted to just share that story with you because when Mark was able to move out of his dad's house and, and buy his own townhome, I, I just can't tell you what a, you know, it was wonderful that he had a place to go when he got out of prison. That's so essential, that people have a safe place to go, where they have someone that cares about them, some kind of a pro-social situation. But when he wanted to be on his own and he was able to get that townhome, he did all the financing himself, I was scared to death. I was absolutely scared to death to have him move out of his dad's house. But he did, and he did a great job. He got a HUD property. It was not in good shape. He has incredible skills and he was able to fix it up. I mean, it's just the most fantastic, wonderful house that anybody could have, and I'm, I'm so proud of him. He wants to go on to get a doctorate. He's now teaching himself Greek and Hebrew and, let's see, German. He has to, in order to get a doctorate, Doctor of Divinity, he's got to learn German, so he's now teaching himself German on top of everything else that he's doing. So, I wanted to tell that story because I think that Mark is just one example and Brian is another of what can happen when a person makes a very bad choice and does something they shouldn't do, but they are committed to moving in a different direction. And we, we have lots of people here in the city of Inglewood who are trying to move in a better direction, and I hope that you folks will allow...
Ms. Walker, could I get you to conclude your comments?
Will allow them to continue to move in that direction. I hope you'll take a vote tonight to change Ordinance 34.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
See if we have any questions for you. Councilmember Russell.
I don't think you gave your address at the beginning. Do you live in Inglewood?
I don't.
Okay.
I have an organization called CSOR, Coalition for Sexual Offense Restoration, and I work for nothing, and I, I help people with their reentry issues. I write to hundreds of guys in prison. I'm very busy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone.
How long have you had the organization? How long have you been doing this? How long have you been doing that work?
Oh, boy. Pretty much since my son was sentenced very shortly after that. So, when I said the family's been in this for fifteen years, we've, we've been in it for fifteen years.
Thank you for coming and speaking this evening, ma'am. Her next speaker is Kathleen Bailey, Inglewood resident, will address counsel regarding the consequences of incompetent and ineffective government. Good evening, Mrs. Bailey.
Good evening. For background for the citizens who are here in attendance, there was a series of cancer diagnoses at the Allen Water Treatment Plan in 2012, 13, and 15. Our group is trying to assess the radiation dose risk exposure that those plant workers were exposed to as a result of the high-level 2009, 2010, and 2011 sludge and the stockpiling on the, at the plant site. I started requesting data to find out what was going on back in June 30, 2016, and July 5th and July 6th directly to the plant, speaking with Jason Clark. Brennan, the department head, stepped in and requested all inquiries go through him, and then professional forthcoming response stopped. It was over a month from my first request before Brennan confirmed on August 5th that an updated risk assessment was never done. When it was clear that Brennan was not gonna run one, I submitted a request for the data for 2009, 10, 11, so our group can run one independently. That request was simply ignored by Brennan until I sent my August 29, 2016 plea to the city council for help. Then that same day, I received 2009 and 2011. These are full sludge reports. This is twenty-one, twenty pages for 2009, twenty-one pages for 2011. But magically, you can't run a regression analysis, which a RESRAD is, to determine risk assessment on skipped years. You need a series. So, the center here that the state pointed to as the reason for denying eligibility to dispose because of high radiation values of radium is magically and strategically missing. They have, in a September, so it was as recently as September 6, an email between KEC and Brennan states, "We have requested ACZ and it's in their long-term storage." And that's fine, but we haven't received it yet. And an email between KEC and Robinson and Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brennan states in 2014, "CDM is still looking for this report." Again, this is the only one that all three entities can't find. "CDM is still looking for this report. They changed their computer operating systems and are having difficulty opening old files." And this is 2016. "As far as finding the report, we do not have it in file. This report is missing from the plant records." That brings me back to 2006 notes from a phone call with Jason Clark. Jason Clark said, and this is a phone conversation, that he does not have, Jason has been very helpful, always has. I've called him on all kinds of things for years, primarily concerning the water information, the data that we get from our potable water. This is unrelated to that. He said, he said he looked for it, but it was not there. He said he gave Brennan a box that had a lot of test results. He'd go over to the city center and look through that box to try to locate the data. And at that time I was requesting, I didn't realize how far back I had to go, and I was only requesting 2012, 13, 14. So, I asked him if it was normal protocol to keep the test results on site, and he answered yes. I told him that that is for me cause for, for serious concern as to why the change in protocol for those years of test results and removing them from the plant. It is a serious concern that those critical years were absent from the data that was even provided to city council in the notes from KEC, talking points. Brennan himself changed the protocol and had, he will have to explain why and where that box of data is. Jason, who was being open and professional, will not be punished for Brennan's actions. We are still waiting for the 2010 data. It is clearly available, it clearly will be available, but it has not yet been provided. And while I have a moment, they're, they're trying to tell me that, that twenty-one page and a twenty-page, that I should be able to use a single page of 2004 through 2011 data on one page and five lines on 2010 and run a regression analysis. So, that's how unaware they are between a summary report, by they I mean KEC, all the gentlemen and Brennan, and actual reports, and all of you. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if we have any questions for you. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Doug Cohn, Inglewood resident, will address counsel regarding historic preservation. Good evening, Mr. Cohn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I'm gonna go a little bit different direction tonight. My hobby is metal detecting, and I found this little pin three years ago that said, "Anybody but Peabody." And seemed like a perfect time during the election sequence here to tell you the story of Anybody But Peabody. The year was 1904, and Republican incumbent Governor James Peabody was losing popularity. It was gonna be an election year because of his hard-line stance with the miners. There were strikes in the coal mines, and strikes in the gold mines, and he called out the National Guard and said, "Take care of this." This was in '03. In June of 1904, a union miner, Harry Orchard, set off a bomb at the Town of Independence, killing nineteen non-union miners, and Peabody was the law and order guy. The Democratic Party suggested selected Alva Adams to be their candidate. He'd been the governor twice before, 1887 to 89, and 1897 to 99. The Democratic slogan was "Anybody But Peabody." The Democrats contended that Peabody had mismanaged the mining strikes and Adams could do a better job, as he had proven. Adams believed that arbitration, not military intervention, was the best way to settle it. Adams ran what would become the most corrupt election ever to haunt the Colorado ballot box. During the election of 1904, the Democratic Party allegedly committed voting fraud in Denver and surrounding urban areas. The Republican Party was said to have committed voting fraud in the populous mining and corporately dominated towns. One precinct in Denver, 717 Democratic ballots were cast with only 100 legal voters. But on the other side, the mine owners ordered thousands of the workers in the mines. If they wanted to keep their jobs, they needed to vote Republican. One Republican officer, excuse me, in, who worked for the Denver Union Water Company publicly boasted, "We rule. The people have nothing to do with the nominations and the elections. We rule and we're gonna continue to rule." Despite all this, these presumptions, the Democrat Adams was elected governor, and the Republican Jesse McDonald became the lieutenant governor. In those days, they had a split ticket you could vote, required. Peabody challenged the result. He said that Adams had cheated. The decision was appealed to the legislature, who had the responsibility to resolve these kinds of disputes. It was concluded that both sides had committed major violations of the election law. On the day that Adams took office, March 17, 1905, the Republican-controlled legislature voted to remove him from office and reinstall Peabody, on the condition that Peabody immediately resign, and he did. And at day's end, Peabody's lieutenant governor, Jesse McDonald, occupied the governor's mansion in Denver, thus making Colorado the only state to have had three different governors on the same day. I just thought it'd be kind of goofy with all this, never Trump, never Hillary, all the junk going on. Add a little levity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. See if we got any questions for you. Councilmember Olson.
Just for the, everybody's enjoyment, where, what's your sources, where were your sources for this?
Well, if you type in either...
I already did. I just want for them to hear where they can find this information, because it's kind of fun to read.
Oh, it is. You can go to the state archives, the History Colorado Archives. If you just type in either "Anybody But Peabody" or "The Day Colorado Had Three Governors."
Most of what you read was from Wikipedia, but it's a really fun story. That's all my point. Thank you. Thank you for the fun of it. I heard of this story when I moved to Colorado. I thought it wasn't for real, and it is.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Moving on to our next speaker is Robert Elstrom. Will address counsel regarding morality versus legality. Good evening, Mr. Elstrom.
Robert Elstrom, 4820 South Fox, Inglewood. Wanted to speak to you tonight. It's obviously about Ordinance 34, and there's some concepts of morality and legality that exist on this, both sides of this. Let me start with the basic concepts of morality and why they're important to us here tonight. Perhaps the most widely accepted model of moral development espoused by Lawrence Kohlberg discusses six stages that some of us progress to or fail to progress to throughout our lives. We rely on elected officials to have an understanding of the greatest good and rely on them to make sound decisions that far transcend their personal feelings, such that they may promote the general welfare. In stage one, as children, we're driven by... In stage one, as children, we're driven by obedience and punishment. We focus on direct consequences of our behavior. We believe that the worse the punishment for an act is, the more bad the other person must have been. This can lead to inferences that even innocent victims are guilty in proportion to their suffering. One council member here made a stage one moral inference, that people who find their names on the sex offender registry must be extremely bad and dangerous because otherwise they would not have been punished harshly. That, of course, misses a number of important points, such as socioeconomic drivers that lead to differential representation and current social pressures that drive punishment. Stage two moral reasoning expresses, "What's in it for me?" You show some interest in the need of others, but only to the point where it might further your own interests. If you find yourself thinking that you cannot make right decisions about this legislation because it might not benefit your political standing, then you would be making a stage two moral reasoning decision. In stage three, we just kind of want to get along with others. If you find yourself worrying that other council members might judge you poorly, even though you know that you represent your community and 30,000 people plus, and you find yourself driven by the need to get along, then you are making a stage three moral-based decision. In stage four, authority and social order obedience-driven, it's important to obey laws, dictums, and social conventions because of their importance in maintaining a functioning society. Most members of society make it to stage four. That's where they remain. Most of us realize that there's laws, we should follow them. If you find yourself unduly concerned that this law simply should exist because it's a law and someone smarter than you must have made it, then you are operating from a stage four moral base. Democratic government requires you to at least make it to stage five, however. In stage five moral reasoning, principles include such things as basic human rights, like life, liberty, and justice. You view morality as changeable mechanisms. Ideally, you view rules that can maintain general social order and protect human rights. Rules are not absolute dictates that must be obeyed without question. You realize that people are mutually respected, parts of the community, laws are regarded as social contracts. Those who do not promote the general welfare should be changed when necessary to meet the greatest good for the greatest number of people. That is achieved through majority decision and inevitably compromise. Democratic government isn't necessarily based on stage five reasoning, moral reasoning. There is a stage six. People like Gandhi and Martin Luther King may get to there. I'm not asking you to do that. That brings me to the legality side of this discussion. I'm going to run out of time quickly. Others are smart people. They know what they can get away with. They know what you can get away with. O.J. Simpson had more money to spend on attorneys than most of us can dream of. You don't have Johnny Cochran, you don't have Alan Dershowitz. You do have Tom Rice and you do have Sersa, as Ms. Dickerson referred to earlier. It's not an infinite free supply of money. It comes from the other cities that pay into it. Judge Moore said that this is not a legal issue, that this is a legislative issue. He does not want this in his court. He asks you to do his job. I don't think that your attorney told you that. I don't think that Tom Rice has suggested to you how much. He agreed with Judge Moore in court. I'm not asking any of you to out Gandhi, Gandhi, or to put yourselves at the Martin Luther King level. I am asking you to take a vote to repeal or significantly amend ordinance 34. I'm certainly, I'm certain that you're over a half a million dollars point. I can readily produce evidence that's harming, harming citizens who want nothing more than to be left alone, have their lives in peace. I am one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's see if we have any questions for you this evening. Councilmember Olson.
I am curious about where you would see communitarian ethics fitting into Kohlberg's and what you would suggest in terms of getting the mind of the community involved.
I missed the very first part of what you said. I'm sorry, ma'am.
What, what is your view of communitarian ethics as it relates to Kohlberg's stages of development and decision-making like this? And how would that fit with decision-making for a city like ours where we want to get public input?
Are you asking me whether you should open up your questions to the public as a whole?
Whether the public ought to have a play and a say in the process as a communitarian ethical stance? And it's, it's fine if that's not something that you think we should do.
I'm not trying to, with your question, my, my, my question for you is having a poor understanding of how the city government actually works. This is all very new to me.
Sure, sure.
I view you as the representatives for 30,000-plus people. I did the math, each of you probably represents about 5,000 people.
I, I guess what I, I'm asking whether the community ought to be involved in this decision at all, or should just the seven of us decide?
If I saw a community outpouring of pitchforks and torches, people saying, "My God, these people are hanging around our schools and preying on our children," I would say, "My God, please listen to the people. I've not heard anybody say that yet."
Okay, that, that helps answer it. The second question I would have is, if we were to amend the amendment, which is one of the suggestions you made, what would the amendment be that you think would be helpful and particularly in this case?
I'm pretty sure you're familiar with actuarial models, and the state has a very good actuarial model. I'm sorry that I don't remember the acronym. I'm somewhat acronym-poor person, but it's much like insurance actuarial models. There are people who really are those people that you don't want around.
So you'd use actuary rather than distancing as your, as your metric for this, then?
I would.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Ronnie Newman, will address counsel regarding residency restrictions. Good evening, Mr. Newman.
Hi, I'm Mr. Newman.
Oh, yeah, you know what? I was notified of that. I appreciate that. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, that is recognition of unscheduled public comment. Our first speaker is Michelle Jeng? Gang?
Gang.
Thank you. Here to speak about, is it residency restrictions?
It is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You would state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Michelle Gang. I'm staff to the Colorado Sex Offender Management Board. I'm employed with Division of Criminal Justice. I do not live in Inglewood. I am here, really, I emailed some research and I brought some research. I understand you folks are having another meeting in November. I just want to let you know, we're available. We have staff researchers. If we can't answer any questions or assist as you make deliberations, we are available to provide you any information we can. And I think most of you have my email. I know Councilman, Councilwoman Berantine has my email. And I know that making good, sound public policy is tough. Making ethical and responsible choices with regard to management of sex offenders is not always popular. I live this world daily in my job, willfully, I live this daily. So I know it's really hard. So I know it's important to have good information. Clearly, your goal is to increase the safety for the folks living in Inglewood by banning convicted sex offenders. That's how I'm seeing this ordinance. But they will still be here. They will still visit family here. They will still work here. They may even shop here. They probably will spend the night on the couch on the holidays with their families. They may even couch surf. But you won't know they're here because your law says you don't have them here. And so I think it's very important to note that you don't have a way to track them if you're saying they don't live here. They're just going to go underground. And I have support, sent some research to you to support that residency restriction laws are enacted, and then the research shows that, that sex offenders go underground, they start missing, we can't track them anymore. I also just wanted to remind everybody that the federal laws that are driving public policy, such as the Jacob Wetterling Act, the Megan's Law, Adam Walsh, those are the result of tragic horrific crimes, but those are not typical sex crimes. And those crimes represent less than 1% of the sex assault convictions across the country. That's how rare it is for a stranger abduction to occur. Again, you've heard this. Sex assaults happen within family environments. They're perpetrated by people we know within relationships. They're coaches, teachers, uncles, boyfriends, girlfriends. So you've heard all that before. I just wanted to remind you of some of those facts. And so I appreciate you letting me come. I brought some of the research reports. I can hand them to staff if you'd like, and I brought my business cards too, in case you wanted any of those. And I think that's it. I don't want to waste your time.
No problem. Thank you, ma'am. Let's see if I have any questions from council for you. Councilmember Berantine.
I, I saw on the city website your email, and I had a little trouble with the link on there. Is that the information that you brought?
Yeah, and I downloaded the PDF and emailed that as well, but I did bring that information with me.
All right.
So do you want me to approach or just?
I, I got from the information that you were, you said, I think that CML said there were like 350 municipalities or local governments, and the information you provided was that there's six communities. There's only six communities in the state of Colorado that have any residency restrictions.
I believe that was correct at the time that study was done.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And the rest of the 390 or whatever it is, community has no restrictions at all, including whether they live next to a school or anything. They have no residency restrictions whatsoever in those other 300 and 400 other communities. Only six in the state have them.
That is, that is correct, yes.
And that's the information that you're providing was part of that little paragraph that you had given for that study?
Yes, yes. That, that study was, was requested by the legislature, and that study helped them determine that they were not going to legislate residency restrictions statewide.
All right, thank you. Thanks for bringing it as well.
Of course, you're welcome.
Any information you would like to provide after the questions, you can provide to the city clerk, just in case I forget to mention that. Oh, you know what? No more further questions. So with that, I'll thank you for speaking this evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diana Brockhousen, here to speak about 34. Good evening, Mrs. Brockhousen.
My name is Diana Brockhousen. I live at 4810 South Fox Street in Inglewood, Colorado. Brian Brockhousen is my son. And I had some stuff written on this piece of paper that I wanted to read, that prayerfully my heart was touched, and, and I believe that it's more important that each and every one of you, instead of hearing just my words, perhaps can feel my heart a little bit. When I first found out about ordinance 34, I was totally shocked that Inglewood council people were going to put my son inside this little box and take him away from me, and anybody who committed a same similar crime was going to put all of those people in the box. And boy, I tell you, that just broke my heart, and I just couldn't hardly believe it. And then I turned around and I started thinking about all of these other people that aren't in the box with him. What about the people that have done arson? What about the thieves? What about the senior abusers, the ones that steal purses from elderly at the grocery store and, you know, different things like that? Why aren't they in the box with my son? Because he can't be the only one that's going to harm Inglewood and its citizens. You know, there's a lot of stuff out there that could harm us. I wanted to tell you just a little bit about my son, so you would understand what's going on. I was married at a very young age. I had two children from my previous marriage, and we adopted two children. My husband was not happy with that situation, I guess, and he decided to leave us when my children were very young, and he disappeared totally out of my life and their life forever. I felt that my sons needed to go somewhere to get some people to help them learn manly things, you know? They didn't need to be staying around mommy all the time and doing mommy's stuff and helping mommy. So I decided to send my boys to Boys Club, which was the worst mistake I ever made my whole entire life, because that's where my boys were sexually abused. And by the time I found out about it, it was too late for Brian, because his older brother sexually abused him. I love my kids, and I was very, very angry at the people that perpetrated these crimes upon my children, which started this whole vicious circle. But you know what? I read this book, this really important book, and God says, "Vengeance is mine, declares the Lord." And I learned from that, that I don't have to be the one to make all these choices and decisions and decide, you know, who's wrong and who's right. And then I read one more thing that was so important, and God said, he wanted me to do two things: love the Lord and love others. Love the Lord and love others. And I didn't hear an exception in there. I didn't hear God say, "Love God and love others, except sex offenders. Love others."
Mrs. Brockhousen, could I get you to conclude your comments at this time?
Okay, that is my concluding comment. Thank you. What, real quick, though, I want to say that I have been praying for each and every one of you, and I do pray with all of my heart that you never have to go through any member that you love and care for being, being put in that box and sent away.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if we have any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking tonight. Our next speaker is Matt Triplet, speaking also about 34. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Triplet. I live at 4810 South Fox Street. I am honored to call Brian Brockhousen my younger brother. I wish I had a way to ensure that no child, or adult for that matter, ever had to be subjected to sexual abuse. I wish I could make it so that my brother never had to experience sexual abuse as a six-year-old child. The purpose of ordinance 34 is supposed to do just that: protect Inglewood's citizens. Sadly, it doesn't. The sex offender registry in Colorado was started 25 years ago in 1991. In my research, not one child has been abused in Inglewood by a resident of Inglewood on the sex offender registry. I get it. You inherited a piece of legislation that's broken and wrong in just about every way imaginable. I ask you to do the job you were elected for. The 30,000-plus residents of Inglewood rely on you to think clearly for them on complex legislative issues. They rely on you to do the required research and to make intelligent decisions. I have been coming to council meetings since August 1st of this year. If there was a great community uproar to expel everyone on the sex offenders registry, in the interest of public safety, I would think at least someone would have stood up by now to say something. Instead, I've seen a parade of professionals in multiple fields and everyday Inglewood citizens who have taken the painstaking time to present to council reasons, reports, and evidence as to why this is terrible legislation. If there was anyone here with relevant research data saying that, yes, our community would be free from sexual abuse because of the safety that ordinance 34 provides, I would honestly be shocked. I can guarantee, however, that ordinance 34 is causing considerable harm to its citizens, to the citizens of Inglewood. My family, who have lived in Inglewood since 1988, is just one. My brother has been threatened with eviction since July. Mom, dad, and I wake up nearly every morning wondering if today is going to be the day that we receive the letter, the letter that will take us from our wonderful home, the letter that will disrupt our entire neighborhood. We don't know how long we'll be allowed to stay here as a family and feel a black cloud over our otherwise joyous neighborhood. As you have heard or will hear tonight, we are just one of the families being affected by this horrible legislation. You are legislators. Your job is to analyze data, understand the broader social implications that are not clear to the general public.
Sir, if I could get you to conclude your comments at this time.
And enact or repeal laws that serve your constituents to the best of your ability. You are the voice of the people. Please listen to and speak for them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Triplet? Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening, sir. Our next speaker is RJ Rhodes, also speaking about 34. Good evening, Mr. Rhodes.
I'm RJ Rhodes, 4800 South Fox Street in Inglewood. I wanted to speak to you about Brian's character. I am his neighbor, been, we've been, my wife and I have lived in Inglewood since 1988, and raised three children here in Inglewood, and I've always enjoyed this community as a, kind of a small-town feel and a neighborly community. One of the things that, you know, you hate to have a neighbor that has a child that commits a sex crime, a sex offensive crime, and, and, you know, you, you never want that to happen, and you don't want it to happen to your child or anyone else. Well, one thing you do is, you know, you're, you're always anxious to see what, what kind of person they come back out of prison, and after being through many, what, 10 years in prison, you, you wonder, well, what are they going to come back like, you know? Are they a changed person? And I've spent time in prison before myself and prison ministries. So I've been in, served in Sterling Prison and Cairo's prison ministries. So I've had the opportunity to not only So I've had the opportunity to not only see prisoners in prison and see, you know, how everything's stripped away and they get to decide, are they going to be a changed person? Or are they, are they going to just continue to play a game? So I've seen the inside and obviously live here on the outside. Well, my point is, as Brian returned, I, I was anxious to see, you know, is he a changed person? You know, and what I've learned from Brian since he's been back is that the neighborhood is a completely restored neighborhood in that he's taught me how to be a neighbor again. He not only reaches out to new people who move into the neighborhood and welcome them, he knows them by name, he knows their pets. You know, he's doing the neighborly thing. He's served in our church, my church, for, and served as the sound person in my church. Not only that, Brian got a job right away and was, you know, a, a member of society that was productive. He didn't wait around, he actively searched out to be a contributive member, knowing that what he did was wrong when he had done it. And now he's spent his time and he's back in the community, being a productive member of society. I don't want to see Inglewood be a city that I love and that I live in and that we've been here this long, select people that can't be here and can't live here when they have an opportunity to come and be supported by family members and by the community that they grew up in. That's the support they need in order to continue on the right path.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Rhodes? Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Roberts, also here to speak about thirty-four. And on deck is Kent Mitchell. Sorry, I thought of that as you were walking up, so nothing personal. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Roberts. I'm the Director of the Division of Adult Peril for the Department of Corrections. I'm here for informational purposes only and I have all kinds of notes like everybody else about what I was going to say. But after listening to the other speakers, understanding Sex Offender Management Board has shared research offered to share more, I'm going to sort of stay away from my statistics and research and just comment on the fact that the Department of Corrections is committed to successful offender reentry. And it doesn't matter what word comes before offender, if it's sex offender, domestic violence offender, we're committed to making sure that they successfully return to the communities in which they came. You've heard, again, from more than one person that there's no evidence to show that residence restrictions work. I've only been in Colorado a little over a year, as you can tell from my funny Midwestern accent. I spent almost nineteen years with, I was going to say in, with the Wisconsin Department of Corrections. And I worked thirteen of those years in the sex offender world, as I like to call it. Five of those were as Director of Sex Offender Programs, which included overseeing all of the Sex Offender Registry program and community, community notification. Over that time, I had a really distinct opportunity, which I think puts a little credence to this conversation, and that's that I got to know Patty Wetterling. Patty's son Jacob was the reason, is the reason, that we have sex offender registration laws. And after twenty-seven years of Patty not knowing where her son was and what happened, his perpetrator finally came to justice last month. I say that because Patty understood the utility of the registry. It's to share information, to help people feel safer and be safer so they can see where individuals live. Residence restrictions drive sex offenders underground. Iowa saw their sex offender registry compliance rate, non-compliance rate, excuse me, double when they passed their residence restriction. And, and the music's going to play, I see my yellow light. I think the other reason that this is important is because for all of the missing and exploited childhood advocacy that Patty did over her years, she also spoke nationally, all the way to Washington DC, about the fact that residence restrictions do not work. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. If I could have you stick around just for a second to see if there's any questions from council for you. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Kent Mitchell. Is there a Kent Mitchell in the audience? Seeing none, I'll move on to our next speaker, which is Rhonda Faletti. And on deck is Elizabeth Weber. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Faletti. I live at forty-eight fifty-three South Fox. You all have heard the street fox come up a lot because we are neighbors and we have a community on our street. And Liz and I, my partner, we bought our house in June and we are the newest members of the family. And it's a sort of street, even after five months of living there, it's a sort of street that I always wanted to live on because I know my neighbors and we really appreciate it. I'm here this evening in support of my new friend Brian and others in his situation. Admittedly, before I got to know Brian, I held a really poor opinion of sex offenders. I didn't want to live on a street with sex offenders. I just thought, you know, no way. And then I realized after getting to know Brian and calling my own opinions to, you know, like taking a look at how I felt, I realized that it wasn't based on any sort of, sort of like research or statistics or even personal experience. It was really just an opinion that I sort of adopted as part of popular culture. And that's the truth. So I think what I want you to do this evening is to call and to question your own personal biases and consider the, I think largely unfounded biases of the public at large. I hope that you will repeal ordinance thirty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Elizabeth Weber and on deck is Roberta Ponis. Good evening.
Hello, it's hard to follow my partner because we have a lot of the same things in common, but I am here to represent and support Brian Brockhausen, my new neighbor. I stand in front of you as a third-generation Coloradwin, who recently, my lifelong dream of buying a home in Colorado came true. And I chose this city, Inglewood. And now I'm starting to wonder and really hope I didn't choose the wrong city. Speaking tonight about the gravity about ordinance thirty-four is challenging for me, but I know that you are exactly the people I need to be speaking to directly, especially because I'm in District Four. I so greatly appreciate your commitment to public service and the willingness and wanting to make our city safe for all of its citizens. But what we need to do, like my partner said, is we need to set aside our personal bias, especially if those biases have any political motivation at all. For me, this is not just about ordinance thirty-four itself and its dangerous repercussions it will impose on me and my neighbors, but I see this as a very slippery slope for the city, one that is dangerously encroaching upon, trampling upon civil liberties of one specific group. As council members, I appreciate you working on our roads, charter schools, keeping our water safe. But when it comes to ordinances like thirty-four that have a proven track record of failing when it comes to its intended purpose, you have even a greater responsibility to repeal it. So my fear and my question that I'm asking myself and of my neighbors is what is next if this is not repealed? And worse yet, what group is next? Will it be my group? Will it be another ethnic group? You may not see the comparison as an accurate one, but as a gay woman, I make those considerations. I think about those things. So I ask you kindly, and hopefully you will make a decision this evening on repealing this, but think, one, is it what my constituents want? What are the wide-reaching consequences? And just for grins, think, will my group be next? Will my son's group be next? Will my daughter's group be next? And God forbid it be an ethnic group. So I just ask you, think about these things. This man served his time that was imposed by a judge. And you, as Councilwoman Olson had said, you had asked a question, is it the decision of the seven of you? Should you be making this decision or should you be seeking the counsel of the citizens? You represent us. You are sitting in these chairs because you were selected by people like me. So you should hear what we have to say, but ultimately, you chose to be there, so it is your decision.
Thank you, ma'am. Stick around just a second if we have any questions for council for you. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Our next speaker is Roberta Ponis. Thank you. And next speaker is David Szczesinski.
She's difficult to follow. I just wanted to say ditto. But I'm Roberta Ponis and I live at six nine nine seven Robb Street, which you probably don't recognize, so consider me an interloper from the city of Arvada. I am a, a mother and a grandmother. I'm a retired educator from Jefferson County Police Schools. And I have a son who committed a sex offense and served ten years to life at Fremont Correctional Facility. He is out now on parole and he's residing with me and my husband at our home in Arvada. And we too have one of those wonderful community neighborhoods in Arvada. Arvada is one of those cities that does not have a residency restriction. And for that, I am extremely grateful because I think that when you have a child, an adult child, who has committed this offense and serves his time and is in treatment and is under supervision by parole, a lot of restrictions, very, very tight restrictions, but he gets to come home and he is able to get the support of his family, to find a job and to struggle with kind of the PTSD syndrome coming out of prison after ten years. He needs that support. He needs to be able to find suitable work. He needs to be able to find a place to live on his own. And so we're kind of giving him that kind of get started approach. The neighborhood has been wonderful. He grew up in that neighborhood and maybe that's part of it because once you know the person, then it's, it's, the label disappears and you know them as a person who is trying to re-enter society and has paid his debt. So I certainly hope you consider the, the human face of those folks coming out, trying to make it and repeal thirty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is David Szczesinski. And the next speaker is Luke Young. Mr. Szczesinski here to speak about sludge. If you can start with your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, my name is David Szczesinski. I live at four nine zero West Grand Avenue and I have two items to talk about tonight. First of all, I want to repeat Kathleen Bailey's request for twenty-ten sludge data that's needed to run a independent RESRAT report. I don't know why the report was removed from the Allen Plant. I mean, it's suspicious, I don't know why, maybe you don't know why, but we need the report. I mean, what often gets overlooked in this, and which I'm glad Kathleen Bailey brought tonight, is people are sick, people have died. And saying that, well, we don't have the right software to open it, or we don't know where it's at, or someone took it home on their personal computer, which was used a couple of weeks ago, that's not good enough. Excuses aren't good enough. We need that data. And then, second, I was really amazed to learn that Mayor Jefferson, Councilmember Yates, and Mayor Pro Tem Gillett are all on the Water and Sewer Board in this city. And when I first started learning about this issue and I heard some of you say, well, we're not scientific experts, we don't understand what's going on, we have to defer to the experts, well, that sounds reasonable. But now when I realize almost half of you are on the Water and Sewer Board, that means that you don't have expertise in what you're managing? If you don't know what's going on with the water and sewer treatment and why people are dying from cancer from the sludge, then who does? If you aren't experts in the field that you specifically manage in this city, then I say you're incompetent. And I would like to know why you are incompetent and why you have not taken the time to figure out what's going on with the sludge. Those are the end of my comments.
Thank you, sir. Stick around for just a second, see if we have any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Next speaker is Luke Young and on deck is Elaine Holtz. We've got about three left.
Good evening. My name is Luke Young, level one, West Shenango Avenue. First of all, thank you, guys. Thank you, City Council and the city staff for your service and dedication to the city and the community. And tonight here, we're just to follow up on our request, you know, while we talked about this, David and also Kathleen did and also in the previous meetings too about the data, we just wanted to know where it is. And so just need to follow up on that. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. See if there's any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Elaine Holtz and on deck is Caroline Turner. Good evening, Elaine. It's good to see you back in chambers.
It's going to be a long haul. Okay, number one, Elaine Holtz from three three sixty South Lincoln Street. I was glad to hear Robert Elstrom speak as he did. I don't know how many of you caught that, you didn't get my little tail, so I doubted that, but I just wanted to give him credit for a very well-done presentation. After reading the article this past week, I guess, in The Villager and listening to all the council meetings, because even though I wasn't here, as soon as I came out of the second rehab, I was watching everything going on in the city. By the way, I saw things entirely different. Ms. Barrington repeatedly stated that she was contacted and because she didn't make any reply, she turned it immediately over to our now-acting legal beagle, who got a sizable raise, I understand, who never bothered to reply to her. What are we paying him for? Now, I want to say this to you, that I didn't realize what some of the stuff that's been going on, how, but I can say this much to you, how members of our city that are elected officials, that people have put their confidence and trust in, could misinterpret what was so simply stated quite often during that session. And yet, get it so wrong is beyond me. It's really very upsetting because I'm wondering, who is running our city? Who is making decisions if they can't think and hear a conversation and understand the simplicity of it? By, someone says, "I did not respond to that because I was waiting for an answer from the legal department, which we didn't get, so I did nothing." And yet they make all these accusations. You know what? I sat there and I thought about this. And this is what I feel. I doubt they have the ability to make proper decisions concerning very important matters that affect everybody in this community. And therefore, they need to be removed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. See if we have any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Our final speaker of the evening is Caroline Turner, here to speak about thirty-four. Is there a Caroline Turner in the audience? Oh, she's...
This is me.
Thank you.
I am Caroline Turner and I'm Chairman of Advocates for Change. I live in Parker, but I want to bring up the subject about residency restrictions because what you do will have a ripple effect throughout our state and throughout our nation. So I think you need to be very wise about what you do and what you decide. I think it's important for you to pay attention to the empirical evidence, all of which says residency restrictions do nothing to keep people safe. Somebody asked, well, are, are the people just free to go then? No. No, they're under parole, they're under probation, they're on ankle bracelets, their every movement is kept track of. So, no, they're not just free to go. But residency restrictions are a bad idea. As elected officials, you're asked to use wisdom and justice in your decisions. I'll go to Isaiah 10. "Woe to those who decree innocuous decrees and writers who keep writing oppression." So I think you need to just, you know, you can be the forerunner of communities that use the wisdom and the evidence to get rid of bad policy. And I hope that you will do that. You've gotten a ton of evidence from judges, DAs, the Sex Matter Management Board, parole officers, probation officers. They all say, "This is a really bad idea. Don't do it." There's other, there's other ways to do things. Residency restrictions are not wise, they're not smart, and they're not just, oh, I forgot, the other people that are against it is ACLU. I mean, just, it's not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Mrs. Turner? Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming. Oh, Councilmember Barrantine does have a question.
I didn't catch your organization. You were what?
Advocates for Change.
Okay. And how long have you done that?
Oh, I don't know, eight years or so.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have one additional speaker. I apologize. Yeah, if he'll provide that to the city clerk, it'll be disseminated to council. I do apologize, we do have one additional speaker that looked to be crossed out on the roster here, but does still apparently like to speak, and that is Dale Harris. Do we have a Mr. Harris? Good evening. Here to speak about Section 7 and sludge.
Thank you. I've attended council meetings probably for about a year. I've heard a lot about this ordinance 34 and the sludge this summer. Today, I tried to look up ordinance 34 on the webpage. I couldn't find it, but I did find the Title VII. Is that the same thing? Well, I read through Title VII, and I guess I want to say, I fully support what's written. I guess I'm the one citizen that nobody has ever spoke up for it. I think it's a good ordinance. I fully support what is written there. I think we need things like that, and I'm glad it's there. I believe the ordinance should prevent, or I believe our ordinance should prevent, should protect our population. And I believe that's what this ordinance does. So that's my speech on ordinance 34, Title VII. I have it printed here, and I read it. On the sludge and water treatment issue, a lot of talk this last few meetings I attended, or I viewed the last one on the online video. I just want to say, I fully believe that the city has done what it had to do over the years for state regulations and for testing and approval. I assume that we passed all those tests. I don't know if this RESRAD thing is part of that testing. If so, I don't know why those results weren't mentioned. I do not believe for a minute that anybody on this council, or Mr. Kreck, or the Water Board, or any official is trying to cover up anything, or hide documents, or any of that. I mean, I've heard a lot of talking. I've heard a lot of harsh words. I've heard a lot of accusations being thrown at the council, Mr. Kreck. And quite frankly, I think the people that are doing that, it's very shameful that they do that. We don't need that in our city. I heard a discussion a couple of meetings ago about getting an outside tester. I believe Ms. Bailey requested an outside testing facility. It kind of sounded like we were just going to open up our coffers and let her pick a facility, and she was going to spend our money doing the testing. I would advise against that, if that's the direction we're going. I don't think we're ever going to get an answer that would satisfy that group. I think we would do testing after testing, you know, group after group. I don't think you'll ever get an answer to a question that she's asking. Those are the end of my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any questions for him, from council? Seeing none, I'll thank you for coming and speaking this evening. And we'll move us on to council response. Would any member like to kick us off this evening? Seeing none, oh, Councilmember Yates.
Okay. When I first got onto council three years ago, there's a lot of things that I wanted to happen, and I want it to happen now. One thing I've learned in the past three years that moving fast doesn't always produce the results that needs to happen. I found that when we move a little bit slower, it allows the emotions to die down, and it allows me to look at the facts and to make a decision based on facts. So, one of the guiding principles that I tend to use is the fact that we are in a republic and not a democracy. And that simply means that the individual's rights are not trumped by the rights of the masses. Just because you have a 51% vote for something doesn't necessarily mean that it is the right thing to do. So as I work through these decisions, I tend to look at the individual's rights. And does it fall in, you know, to the grounds of, well, I look at the individual's rights more so than I look at a mass opinion. Some of the questions I'll be asking myself about 34 is, is when has a person truly paid their debts to society? And in this situation, that's definitely one of those things that we'll have to look at. Does the ordinance fit into the principles of individuals' rights? Is this being fairly distributed among our laws within our community? And, you know, is the ordinance a reaction of a knee-jerk reaction? Or is it based upon facts? Or was it based upon feelings or emotions? So, there's quite a bit that we have to go through on this. And we're going to have a meeting on that to discuss it. The way I understand it, no one's going to be asked to move until we actually come to some decisions. Either the court case ends, or council chooses to modify, or eliminate, or let it stand. Right now, we're at a situation where we just simply have to look at all of the facts and determine what we're going to do. When it comes to the water situation, it also applies into the knee-jerk reaction. We need to have all the facts. And as council, we are not obstructing any of that information. We're working with what we have. Much of what the issues that have came about, you know, talking about reports that can't be found, happened with a previous city manager. So the allegations that I feel, well... The thing is, we just got to have time to get all this stuff together. And we're not resisting. We're simply trying to get the facts. And we're going to do the necessary studies to find out, is the appearance a valid appearance? Or is it, is it something else? Or is it totally unrelated? At this point in time, we don't know. And when it comes to us sitting on these boards and commissions, very rarely does any individual on a specific board have all of the necessary expertise to understand everything about that. When we sit on the Water Board, we're looking at the general day-to-day operations. Or to handle some of the special things like, you know, tap fees, yeah, tap fees or something along that lines. We don't get into the weeds and, you know, have to understand every single report. That's why you hire staff to do that. One of the reasons that we hired our city manager is that we felt that he would have the necessary skills to start documenting, making sure that all of the documents are in the proper place. Because we did have a long-term department head that, well, he knew everything about it, and he ran his own little island there. But we, we as council, when we hired him, knew that we needed somebody that could get in there and start helping to organize the city and run more efficiently. Unfortunately, all those things takes time. And unfortunately, you know, Eric's having to deal with a lot of the stuff that was done before he ever got there. But I do want to emphasize, as council, we're listening. And we want to do what's right. And we want to make sure that we do it the right way, instead of just reacting because we've got everybody yelling at us and telling us that we're just the scum of the earth. That's not the case. Every one of us ran in this election, in our elections, because we truly care about our community. I can honestly say, I love the people of Inglewood. You know, and we are given tough decisions to deal with. And unfortunately, not always will we please everyone. In fact, it's impossible. So, I do appreciate that everybody came forward this evening. There was a lot of really good comments made. And I appreciate the folks who came and just purely gave us information instead of personal attacks, because then the emotions start to fly. And sometimes, that really does hinder a person's ability to look at the facts. We, you know, I will say that I personally try to ignore those personal attacks and try to keep to the facts. But we are all humans here. So, and I can, like I say, we all love the community we're in and we're serving. And we want to do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would also like to add some response to public comment. Ms. Grochorski, thank you for your service to the citizens of the city of Inglewood, and thank you for the information this evening. Mr. Gilbert, thank you for your research regarding the 7 o'clock start time. You convinced me that 6:00 probably was a bit too early, so we'll see what we take, some action on that. To everyone who came and spoke about Title VII or ordinance 34, I do appreciate your comments and respect what you all are trying to do. I just respectfully ask that you understand my decision not to comment at this time with pending litigation as far as the specifics of anybody's case or our policy generally, until we have an actionable item or a study session that the council can mutually agree upon. I feel that, as my duty as the mayor, I do want to support the decisions of the majority of this body. And I believe that that is my duty. So I hope that you all can understand that at this time. To the folks who came and spoke about the sludge and residual issue, I would ask Manager Keck perhaps for an update regarding the RFP process and where we're at on that, and getting to the point of providing additional information to the public in perhaps some meetings.
Thank you, Mayor. The city did receive three proposals from firms in Colorado that range anywhere from $24,000 to $130,000. One of the things that I know that the citizens asked for was the ability to kind of choose which company that is. Frankly, I appreciate the fact they want to do that, but it sounds like some do and some don't. The logistics of doing so are really quite difficult, as well as trying to get our citizenry up to speed on our purchases and purchasing and procurement policies and procedures. The process for this would be for staff to make an assessment of the verification if they've met the things that were requested in the RFP itself. Then a recommendation would be made to the Water and Sewer Board, as required by city's charter. Water and Sewer Board would then make recommendations to the city council as to an proposal for a contract. And again, I would want to restate once again too, because sometimes when people come and they hear that the city's hiding something, and the city's doing whatever, it seems shady. There's nothing shadier or untoward about what we're trying to do here. Again, I'll state yet again, for the fourth or fifth time, we are trying to get to the bottom of this and the facts, and take it very seriously. The public health and safety of not only our employees, but our residents is a paramount concern. We do take that very seriously. So, again, week after week, when we hear that we're doing something sleight of hand or hiding something, that couldn't be anything further from the truth. What we have ascertained is, fact of the matter is, that report is missing for 2010, that was at the plan. It's been missing for quite some time, apparently. ACC Laboratories no longer has that report on their, on their systems. CDM Smith, our current engineering firm, does have it. We actually found they have the hard drive on an old computer. The hard drive was damaged. We, as a city, are actually paying to have that hard drive repaired, the heads on it, so they can actually read the data and get that report off. It's not a simple process. And again, I think Mr. Yates said something very cogent. And that is, we need to go slow in order to go fast. So we're taking the time to make sure that we do this correctly. Once we get that data, Ms. Bailey and everybody else who would like to have that data may have it, if in fact, they're able to get it off this hard drive. And that's where we are with this particular issue at this point in time there.
Thank you for that update. And to Mr. Szczesinski, Szczesinski, and his comments, I didn't want to kind of follow up with Mr. Yates. You know, as the mayor, I am appointed to the Water and Sewer Board by charter. And I do think that that is in the best interest of the citizenry. Employees and experts are not always as accountable to the public, in my opinion, as elected officials are. And I believe that that truly is our role on that, on that board and commission. Councilmember Barrantine?
I appreciate the update from City Manager Keck. It is our responsibility to have the reports, to have documentation, and available. So whatever it's costing us to go ahead and do that, we need to have that information. It was a decision, for financial reasons, to not remove the sludge. We violated certain procedures and the law. And we should have had it covered. We should have had it removed in a timely manner. And that has, quite honestly, never been disputed. We need to make sure that we have the oversight, whether we have people on council or people in this community that understand what the law is.
Point of order, please.
What might it be?
The point of order here is, does Councilmember Barrantine have solid proof that we intentionally broke the law on this? We're still in the process of figuring this out. And it's grandstanding.
You know, Councilmember Barrantine, I do hear some concern from another member. Is there any additional information you can provide regarding the alleged law violation?
I don't think it's ever been disputed that the law says we were supposed to cover the sludge and that we were supposed to remove it on an annual basis. And we've agreed that we will go ahead and make sure that we change those procedures to come into compliance with the state law. I think Kathleen Bailey and the people who have presented have presented over and over again, to the point where we already agreed that we knew that that procedure had to be changed. Kathleen Bailey has presented, and they have agreed that there was some financial interest in why we didn't go ahead and remove the sludge. And Tom Brennan has also presented that as well. I was just restating the facts.
Thank you. I will allow that, you know, it does seem, you know, although we do not have any official sort of opinion on whether or not a law has been violated, I do respect Councilmember Barrantine's opinion on that issue. And I believe that she's free to voice that. And so, I believe I'll settle that point of order in allowing Councilmember Barrantine to continue.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
So, it does seem that we're trying to get that report to you. I do appreciate the concern. Anytime the city has missing information, that it does look suspect. And I appreciate that. So I think that we're trying to move forward on it. And I'm sure as soon as we get that information back, that we will have better procedures in place and some accountability so that we don't backslide onto the other issues that kind of ended up creating this in the first place. As to the Title VII, I think it would only be appropriate, as it was with the Riles case, that while this is in court, that there is some assurance that people don't have to worry that until a court decides on this issue, that they're going to be removed from the community. I think that that's a reasonable request. It didn't, in the four years that it was not being enforced at all during the time that the Riles case came in, there was no lack of safety in this community. We have a police department that knows how, we have a probation department that knows how to work with things. And apparently, they were able to keep us all very safe during that period of time. And I would think that it's only reasonable that we extend that same. As Councilmember Yates said, they're not enforcing it. But to not make some kind of official statement that they're not enforcing it, to make it up to the police department instead of this legislative body, to not make a declaration, to not make it... to not make a declaration, to not make it official, what our stance is going to be, and that it's just some kind of happenstance by the police department on how they feel that day, and not make it an official policy by this legislative body, I think is reprehensible. And I personally, I apologize for it. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comments? Seeing none, we will move on to Item Eight, Communications Proclamations and Appointments. We do have one item, a proclamation declaring October 10th, 2016, Taiwan Friendship Day. Can I entertain a mo, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas the Republic of China, Taiwan, will be observing its 105th Anniversary of National Day on October 10th, 2016, and whereas the State of Colorado and Taiwan entered into a sister-state relationship on May 5th, 1983, and whereas the bonds of true friendship and steadfast trade partnership between the City of Inglewood and Taiwan have been strengthening, resulting in a strong economic, social, and tourism and cultural exchanges, and whereas the City of Inglewood is looking forward to further promoting the relationship with Taiwan for mutual benefits, and whereas the City of Inglewood is delighted, delightful to join in observing the annual tradition and extend congratulations to Taiwan during the celebration. Now therefore, I, Joe Jefferson, Mayor of the City of Inglewood, hereby proclaim October 10th, 2016, as Taiwan Friendship Day in the City of Inglewood, Colorado, and I urge all residents to extend congratulations and best wishes to Taiwan during the celebration, given, under my hand and seal, this third day of October 2016. I will be presenting this, I believe, to, at their national celebration downtown this weekend. We move on to Consent Agenda Items, Agenda Item Nine. I would entertain a motion at this point.
Mayor, move to approve Consent Agenda Item 9A1.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments?
Who, who would do the second, I'm sorry?
That was Councilmember Olson.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Moving on to Agenda Item 10, those public hearing items. We do have a public hearing scheduled this evening, a public hearing for the resolution of the Ironworks Metro District Service Plan, our staff source, Planner Two, Audra Kirk.
Mayor, could I just suggest a point of order that we take a five-minute breather?
Sure, before we open the public hearing. I think that might be wise.
Because if we open the public hearing, then we can't.
Then we've got some potential ex parte, so I agree. Let's take a five-minute recess. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Page thirty-two.
I get up, I want to go.
Oh.
Yep.
She just said, "I'm toast."
You know, they have them to sell here.
Hundred ninety-nine.
It's three hundred forty-five dollars now.
Name was at Cabela's?
No, it was online, this is special online. He had it for like, three days. His son called me up, because he knew I was looking for one. He goes, because he's a guy, he goes, "Okay, I can't."
Yeah, that's, wow.
So my wife had one, so I was still on this year. Not one. They just. Hello, hello. You know, this. She's. The people want to make this. No, I didn't know. Those, you and I would agree. And, you know, I stuffed that. Yeah, I mean. I'm gonna go out, I just don't want to. See, they're gone. I'm. You know. I just don't want to. Oh, no, no, no. See, they're gone. I'm. You know. I just don't want to. I just don't want to. See, they're gone. I'm. You know. You know. Fuck, you and Steve Markin. I mean, obviously, there was money, people, right? It cuts out a little guy. Now, your problem is, is that. You love that, so. You love that. You love that. You know. 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 You saw one, what was that play they had where, I think it was the opening week or the second week, and third to the guy, and he ran all the way across the field or the goal line and scored. I was like, wow, what a wild thing. I can't remember what that was, honestly, but it was, there's been some pretty crazy finishes in college football. And I didn't even get tipped or anything, huh? He just brought it right down. I agree, it's amazing, because that happened in the Green Bay game, I don't know if you saw that last year, where somebody ran down the field and then just kind of turned around and the ball was right there, and boxed everybody kind of out, and, see, change, change thing happened in that game. I agree, the defenders kind of let that happen, but. Yeah, I'm a big football guy, too. I, I'm into NFL, that's all I can really do. They win the game or no? How many we have? Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure we have plenty. I was like, wait a second, yeah, yeah. Boy. They play gold whites, huh? What division are they in, are you thinking about? Yeah. Huh? Academic? Wait, gosh, man. Different situation than Valor or, you know, some of the other football powerhouses out there. I'm too old for this. Okay, we have an issue on the public hearing. I apologize. We were talking football, so this is all right. That's important, Tom. The public hearing, the opening clauses, we're doing an opening clause, if she can not be, so, you know, we approve, so I pass it over because they are trying to stream for this project, and it is attached. It's been published. It's been published, but it wasn't a separate item. It's not going to be, after the public hearing, to try to report this resolution. It's, it's, it's. Counsel approve. Just ask, motion to approve the resolution, being added to the. After the, after, right after the public hearing? I think after the public hearing, number two, you moved and approved the resolution. So wait, where was it? This was in Item 10, okay, so it was in the back of there.
It was already published.
It's unpublished, it's published, it's on the website. I don't see a problem. And we show October 30th, the date, to that be approved. It was just something that was getting on the agenda as a separate item. I will explain this. We'll see, we'll see. Don't get too excited yet. Well, you know, at least we tried. Yeah, exactly. That's the thing, at least we have to try. I totally agree. We'll, we'll do our best. I'm sorry? Yeah, I'll stick around and sign. Yeah, I'll get this from him, I've got a seal, so it'll be a state seal, so I'll do that. I'll write the number in there, and you sign it, and give it. Yes, and I'll put the number in, if you go ahead and sign it. It's just so embarrassing. I have four of them. It's, I do several originals. So, yeah, just sign it there, if they, if they agree, and head to me, and I'll take care of it. Guys, we're about to come back to order. If you could please take your seats at this time, I'd appreciate it. But that just came in the middle of. I should, like, you should have seen your buddy, you went like that, I'm like, oh, you remember tonight, you'll be embarrassed. We, we missed. Remember I told you? No, we should not be making. I just, I just told you what I thought on the record, so you're welcome to make a different statement if you'd like. Well, I think we need to be really careful on this. I hear you, I, I don't appreciate the comments, I just don't think that I can restrict. You think you can? Are we starting? In my opinion, I chose not to, ma'am. I chose not to, I chose not to. Okay, it's a choice you make. It's good to know. Nobody's here, you can eat your dinner. They all left.
Okay, we are back in order here. I would entertain a motion to go into this public hearing.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please, any comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
I do. Audra Kirk with Community Development. Good evening, Mayor Jefferson, members of council. Tonight before you, as a resolution to conditionally approve the Ironworks Village Metropolitan District Plan, this was to come to you last week at study session, but that meeting was canceled, so you, you will be seeing this for the first time tonight. And I'm actually just going to turn this over right now to Aaron Foy, the developer, and his attorneys, Sean and Megan, so that they can explain this entire process and have questions with them. You can, they can answer that for you.
Good evening, Sean Allen, on behalf of the applicant.
We could have you swearing first.
It's good.
Might want to ask Mr. Cobra.
That's, that's fine.
Again, Sean Allen, on behalf of the applicant, we are district council for metropolitan districts, we also have district council, council for developers and builders who are attempting to form a district, and that process is what we are here for tonight, is to seek approval of a service plan for the formation of the Ironworks Village Metropolitan District. So we have your organizers, organizers, you have the BLVD Builders LLC, this is Aaron Foy, we have a financial advisor, Stifle, they ran our financing plan exhibits in the service plan, about what sort of debt capacity the district would have, and again, we are the attorneys on behalf of the applicant. We're going to give you an overview of what a special district is. We know that, we had one before you many years ago, Kent Place, and our understanding is there hasn't been one since. We'll give you an overview of what a district is, and then specifically what we're asking for, for this particular service plan. So, special districts in Colorado, basically they're a form of local government, quasi-municipal government, governed by the Special District Act, that's Title 32 of the statutes for Colorado. Essentially, provide a form of tax-exempt financing, and it's tax-exempt, it's the income is tax-exempt, double tax-exempt, state and federal, for a bondholder who has paid an interest rate for lending the district dollars, so they can build the infrastructure. And in addition to that, it's, we also can, a district can also own, operate, and maintain public improvements, and it's typically those improvements that the city doesn't take. And so, and in this case, it's all of the public improvements, the city is not taking those for ownership and operation maintenance, this metro district will take those on, own them, operate, and maintain them as well. Benefits of use, essentially it is that tax-exempt financing, that's what we're able to do, that's a lower cost of borrowing. When it is tax-exempt, the interest rate is lower. If it's a taxable financing, interest rates are higher, because your investors are saying, I have to pay tax on my interest rate, I'm going to charge you a higher, higher rate. So, tax-exempt offers the ability to finance those improvements at a lower rate, a lower cost of borrowing. It, because it's local, it is, those properties within the boundaries of the district, they would, they're, essentially, they are paying their own way, they're paying for their own benefit, as opposed to citywide financing improvements that are benefiting a more, a particular area within the city itself. Um, special districts in Colorado, what can we do? Basically, your top five are your main ones, it's your streets, your, um, safety protection improvements, those are your traffic signals and signage and so forth, park and recreation, open space, trails, parks, uh, water improvements, the main water lines, sewer lines, drainage, those are your top five that go there. The dis- the special district act does give additional powers, if, um, but that can be project specific, if they need to utilize those, mosquito control, perhaps if you have a large detention pond, it needs some, um, treatment there, you can have, um, districts can provide that sort of service to mitigate those. But, uh, our top five here are the ones that we'll be looking at for this particular district. Um, powers, how we do it is, districts, what they do is they, through their formation, they have debt authorization ability and taxing, property tax imposition. And it's through those property taxes that they pay for their services, either on the operational and maintenance side, or on the debt side, and repaying the debt that has been issued to the district to finance the infrastructure. Districts also have the, um, statutory power to impose fees for services, and it has to be for a service, it cannot be a fee to just pay its general fund, it has to be, if you're providing a service, you can finance that through property taxes, as well as through a fee for services. Um, think of it like a park and recreation fee, if you're giving a service, but you can impose a fee for that type of service as well. Uh, districts can enter into agreements, private and public, um, public would be an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement with the, with the city, for example, or with other districts. And private, they can enter into, um, agreements with the developer, in terms of financing, they can enter into agreements for the bond investor, so that on the private side, we can do that as well. And districts can operate and maintain public improvements, and in this case, for this district, we have lots of the improvements are not being dedicated to the city, the city has, has determined through their, your approval process on the development side, that keep that with the project, and this would be a vehicle to help fund those, um, improvements that need to be operated and maintained throughout the life of that project. Uh, procedures for forming a district, this is the first pers- the first step, is a service plan hearing, a public hearing where we ask the jurisdiction to approve the service plan, and if we get that approval, it's by a resolution, we take that resolution, attach it to a petition to the district court, we say, court, we have the necessary resolution or approval, may we have a formation election, court grants that election, then you hold that election, and you certify the results to the court, and then the court gives a decree, an order and decree, forming the district, you record that, and now you, by state law, you are a district, so that's the process, so this is step one, but it's in a shorter timeframe from tonight, the election in November, to the formation, recording, and so forth, so that's, that would be the process we would go through. Um, governing body, so a district under Colorado law, you can either have five seats or seven seats, we're going to have five seats in this district, there's no need for seven, um, it's not a extremely large master planned community, so there's, five is sufficient for, um, the representation, um, initially it will be elected. And to be an eligible elector, you must be, one, Colorado registered voter, and two, you have to be a property owner, either a property owner because you live there, or a property owner, in this case, because there are no homes yet, it is you own taxable property, and it can't be a company, it has to be an actual person is the voter, so companies cannot vote. And electors, um, excuse me, directors are every even year, so may have sixteen, may have twenty eighteen, that's when you have your director elections by state law for metropolitan districts. So if there's a vacancy, or if someone's term is up, then those would be the seats that would be up every two years, and it helps keeps the, uh, the terms staggered, so you don't have all five expiring at the same time, and so forth. Um, so they are former local government, we do meet on a regular basis, that's one of the things that we have to do, we have to meet on a regular basis, um, so, and we give notice of when those are, we set what our regular meetings will be, third Thursday of every third month, you know, something of that nature, that's noticed, it's posted within the boundaries of the district, we can give the city also a copy of this, um, regular meeting notice, and so we have our regular, regular meetings, and we also have to have minutes, we have to have budgets, have to have audits, so there's accountability for a district, so once you approve these, they don't just go out into the world and, and operate without some constraints on them, and both by the service plan that we're asking has constraints, and by the statutory regulations, we have constraints in what we must do as a district in Colorado. And districts often, um, they engage professional managements, management teams, accountants, engineers, attorneys, and so forth, to help them stay in compliance with the laws and meet their needs. Uh, covered all the, uh, open meetings, minutes, we have to keep budgets, audits. So now, that's kind of a big idea of what is a metro district, and now why are we here tonight, because we're asking for a specific metropolitan district to serve the particular development that Mr. Foy has, um, before you. So Aaron, if you'd like to give the council some idea of why you're here tonight, why you're asking for a district, why it's important to your project.
Sure, and, and some of this I discussed, uh, during our hearing a few weeks ago, the public hearing for the approval of our PUD amendment and site plan. Um, some of this is repeated from what I presented that night, uh, but, but the, uh, this, the information to kind of draw your attention to is the, what's maintained by this metropolitan district, uh, it'll be green space, uh, we will have, uh, a sound wall along the railroad track, uh, there will be fencing, there'll be, uh, a retaining wall along there, we'll also have roads, we may have an entry monument down here along Fox Street, or up here, uh, on Amherst, um, as well as the district's going to own and maintain, uh, these detention areas here. Um, and as I've mentioned before, uh, the site has, uh, buried contamination, uh, we will be removing some of it, uh, but some of it will remain, and, uh, and one of the concerns that the state has is, uh, making sure that the ID barrier that we have underneath, underneath the soil we're going to be added, uh, is maintained, and, uh, and that people are aware that there's a risk of digging in the dirt below that barrier. Uh, in our discussions with, uh, CDPHE, uh, they prefer the idea of a metropolitan district, uh, they see a quasi governmental entity as being better able to, to handle the, the covenants that we're going to have on the site, and better able to enforce that, as opposed to an HOA with, with dues that may or may not get paid, that, you know, they need to sue to collect, things like that, something that's set up, has the ability to tax, and has the ability to kind of maintain and, and be a permanent existing, uh, entity. The other issues that we have and why we're asking for the district, uh, obviously first, the financing of some of the infrastructure that we will be installing, uh, but also, uh, the, the city, uh, staff has recommended that we not seek, uh, dedication of the streets, uh, and, and there were a variety of reasons for that, um, uh, some of it had to do with contamination and concerns about the city taking ownership of those areas, but, uh, also there were concerns, we, we were trying to do narrower streets than are typical in the city of Inglewood, um, and, uh, and that raised some questions as well, and it seemed easier to just not dedicate the streets and have them be something that's owned and maintained by a metro district. Um, and again, the last bullet point, kind of repeating what I said earlier, uh, it'll be landscape areas, water detention retention, uh, streets, sidewalks, curbs, uh, that will all be constructed on behalf of the metro district, but then ultimately maintained by.
So our service plan, we have, um, we're asking that we have all, all the powers within that Title thirty-two has, um, so it's, we're not asking for any exclusion in case any of those come up down the road, if we would need to utilize them, they're there, but your main are your, your top five that you see there. And some financial information summary, the probable cost estimate, as of today, is about three point two million in infrastructure cost. We're asking for a debt limit within the service plan that we cannot exceed four point five million, um, when you have, uh, special district bonding, you essentially have a, a par amount that may be here, but you may have some cost of issuance, some capitalized interest, these start eating away at that par, and you come down with a lower net, so we do need to have, and then, uh, you know, higher than, than what the cost estimate is, and if those costs go up, over, you know, if, if we have additional things that we need to finance, the city asks for additional improvements or whatever, but if the costs just go higher than the estimate, so you have your crystal ball be a little bit bigger, so you can account for the four point five million, that's a service plan limit, if in the future, uh, those on the board of directors say, we know we need more than four point five, we are back here in front of city council saying it's a service plan amendment, may we increase that, so you're giving a box today, and to go outside that box, we've got to come back to the city. Um, the debt service mill levy cap, fifty mils, that's fifty mils imposed on the debts, if we issue debt, we'll can size it based on the pledge of fifty mils. If our debt is greater than fifty percent of our assessed value within the district, that fifty mil cap is in place. Once the debt is smaller than fifty percent of the assessed value, and that's going to take time, you're going to have to start paying away at your, at your debt, and you have to have growth within the community, assessed values need to improve, but until that threshold is passed, there is a fifty mil limit on debt. And that is the same as Kent Place that you, uh, city council approved, uh, back in two thousand and seven. Um, fees are permitted, um, the statute allows for fees, we're not excluding that as a power, um, right now, we don't have any, in our financing, we don't have any fees in place, uh, or projected, but they would be permitted under state law, and we have not excluded that, we're asking that that power be retained, in case in the future, if we need to do that, that we can have those fees as well. And again, that's fees for services, you can't just impose a fee because you want to generate revenue, you must impose a fee because you are providing a service. And then the fee is designed to defray that cost of that service. Um, so the next steps would be more about, you know, what we would do after tonight, the formation process, uh, which I kind of alluded to earlier, but before we go into that, or if you wanted to reiterate that, maybe any questions that you may have about, well, what are some of the other limitations of the service plan, or any questions you may have as you write your review of the packet, and this would be a good spot maybe to ask questions.
Mayor Protongila?
Thank you so much for your presentation, I have a couple of questions.
Sir.
Uh, I'm familiar with a lot of communities who've done a community HOA, much larger than this, and they did go with the HOA route, because it keeps the ownership of the fees to the residents versus the municipality, uh, and you, you spoke of something that most of these residents have a concern of, being in a district, is that fees can be added in at any time, where it's hard to budget for fees, and it's hard to budget for those things, so can you help me understand, uh, two things, one is, why an HOA where the, the governing body and the, the building entity is the, is the homeowners themselves versus the municipality? And number two, what will these, what will this mill levy cost these residents on average per household?
Sure.
Per month?
Um, for the, as you mentioned, the fees, uh, there will be a district disclosure, it's required under the service plan, and it's going to talk about that there is a debt limit, that there are mils, and that there are fee powers, so there will be that disclosure, that notice to the first buyers in, that, that disclosure will be recorded, so the subsequent buyers, so they'll get, they'll have a knowledge about the, there's a fee power. Um, districts meet in public meetings, so they're not, if the district imposes a fee, it's done at a public meeting, passage of a resolution by the board of directors, and so there's opportunity for any member of the public to attend that public meeting, voice their concerns, understand what it is, they'll be reflected in the budget, so it's not an ad hoc imposition of the fee, there is the governmental process. For, um, but there also is the resident representation, much like, you know, through an HOA on the board, residents will have the opportunity to be appointed to vacancies and run every even year for, um, director through the election process, so they have the same ability to be on the board, so it's similar in that process for representation by the residents themselves. And then your final question was about.
Cost per month.
Cost per month, and I anticipated that, so I gave us an idea. Let's assume a three hundred thousand dollar place, right now, the assessed ratio is seven point nine six percent for a residential property, that would give you an assessed value, you multiply that assessed value times the mill levy rate for the district, let's assume forty-five mils. At forty-five mils, you're looking at about a thousand seventy-five dollars to the district. Now, there are other overlaying governmental entities that tax that, but the district, metro district line item on the property tax bill, for forty-five mils, and a three hundred thousand dollar place, just about eleven hundred dollars, and then as you adjust the mill levy up and down from that, it would go up or down based upon that, but that would give you about an average look, and that's for the metro district line item on the property tax bill.
And just final question, uh, should they want to disband their taxing district?
If, in the future, if the district wants to dissolve, that's what we call it in the district world, then there is a petition for dissolution, you have to have either the ability to pay off that debt or have no debt. If you haven't, if you still have debt, then there would be conditions where the mill levy would stay in place, and the only existence of the district would be to annually impose that mill levy, just to pay down the debt. But this district is, is looking to take on operations and maintenance, so they would have to absolve themselves of that operation and maintenance responsibility. And the HOA could sit there and say, we're not going to take this on, so then this, there would be a petition, go to election, it would probably fail at that point, so we need to, to exist until such time as there is no more need for that operations and maintenance.
Great, thank you for.
You're welcome.
The questions for the applicant, Councilmember Berentone?
Um, the, this is a smaller one, I think it's a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy-six units, something.
A hundred and thirty-six.
A hundred and thirty-six, um, and the problems that have happened in the past have been, um, the timing for the build out, so that you have just a couple of places built, and then all of a sudden, all of that debt, especially for streets and that, that might incur upfront, um, is being borne by just a couple of properties, which turn them upside down and cause problems, so I just wanted to know, I mean, I know it's a smaller project, is it all going to be done, uh, at once, and then you're going to have your properties, so that you don't have that kind of problem happening? Because, I mean, give or take, you're talking about, if you build, do out forty-five, uh, four point five million, you're talking about another twenty-five thousand, I mean, yeah, twenty-five thousand dollars per, per home on average, but, I mean, that's can be quite a burden, if you only have a tenth of that built out, and then something stalls the project, all of that's been borne by those twenty units or fifty units, and that, and then all of a sudden, your eleven hundred dollars thing doesn't work, so I just wondered how, what your plan is for that.
To, to directly answer that question, is the reason there is the mill levy cap that's in the district?
Mm-hmm.
Is it's, if it's fifty mils, which the cap we're seeking is, whether you have one home or all hundred and thirty-six, it's fifty mils, that's it. So the investor, the mutual investor who says, you know, I want to buy some municipal bonds, they look at it and be like, I sure hope they build all hundred and thirty-six, because it's going to take all hundred and thirty-six to pay me, the investor, if they only build one, I'm not going to get paid, and that's not a default under the bonding, it is, investor, you took that risk, now they're not going to make that risk happen until they believe that Aaron's going to build all hundred and thirty-six units, so they're going to look at, you know, history of his company and success in building and so forth, but if that all fails, homeowner, I bought into this, I had disclosure that it was fifty mils, I'm still at fifty mils, even if I'm the only home in there, so that's the protection to the homeowner.
Uh-huh. And.
My understanding of the market, and this is from our, our financial advisor, is that.
Would you on the mic a little? Thank you.
Uh, from our financial advisor, my understanding is that, is that it will be very difficult for us to, to sell the bonds without a significant number of homes built.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, I apologize.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm standing far away from like.
No, it wasn't you.
Uh.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, uh, my understanding of just the financial market, and the, the market for these bonds, as Sean was alluding to, uh, from our financial consultant, is that, is that, uh, we're going to need to build a substantial portion of these homes before we can even find someone to buy the bonds. Um, that, that, and, and I think it, it goes back to exactly what you're talking about, I know, uh, in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, I was a commercial real estate broker, and I dealt with, there were, there were commercial properties, they weren't residential, but land deals, development of a retail mall, or something like that, where bondholders had issued thirty million, you know, paid thirty million dollars for bonds that were worth ten million, and I think the market is a lot more aware of that problem, and they aren't taking that risk on themselves, they're, they're making us prove up the, the project, so what we will be having is a construction loan that we'll be paying for these costs as we incur them, and after we've got homes built, after we're at a point where someone was willing to take the risk on the bonds, there will be a reimbursement, which will really go to pay down that construction.
Okay, and, um, do you have any other special, um, metropolitan districts that you're involved in right now?
Not right now.
And have you had any fail, or go bankrupt?
We have not.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, any further questions from council? Seeing none, I would seek a motion to conclude the public hearing, unless we have further testimony. Uh, I didn't see anyone, um, signed up, I don't believe, from the public for testimony this evening, so. signed up, I don't believe, from the public for testimony this evening. So I did have a motion from Mayor Proton Gillett. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Before we move on to our next agenda item 11, I did want to bring, bring up an issue with the applicant's resolution. Recall last week that our study session was cut short, or we didn't have a study session in order to be able to study this issue. And the applicants, I believe, hope was that we would be approving a resolution this evening, conditionally approving the service plan for Ironworks Village Metropolitan District. We generally, as a council, have a policy rule that suggests that we generally don't vote on issues the same night as the public hearing. Please give me a reminder, I believe it's the Kells Rule, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And so, you know, we would, I am asking, I am sympathetic to the applicant given their time constraints. They have told us that they are running up against some deadlines here. And I think this is a staff oversight, just to not simply schedule this as a separate agenda item. I would ask a council member to consider motioning to add them under agenda item 11C2.
So moved.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Councilmember Berentine, would you like to comment on this?
I don't think that, that policy that you're stating has anything to do with the study session. I mean, I'm a little confused why the study session would make one bit of difference in this.
Sure. I think the rule implies that you can't vote on the same night as a public hearing. And so...
Kells Rule, may I?
Please.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Kells Rule basically says, second reading of an ordinance shall not be heard on the same evening as a public hearing. Okay? So...
Thank you. So you're right. It's probably not generally applicable to Kells Rule. But again, I am asking council to add this to the...
All right. I just, I just wanted clarification on how in the world a study session would have involved that. But I agree with what you want.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to 11A1. This is Council Bill 31. Staff recommends council approve this bill for an ordinance establishing the 2016 mill levy to be collected in 2017. Our staff sources Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkel. Good evening, Mr. Rinkel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. This is, to approve a bill for establishing the 2016 mill levy that'll be collected in 2017. You've heard the presentations on budget for August 22nd and the 29th study sessions. And we have a public hearing to gather citizen input on 2017 budget on September 19th. This will ask for a mill of 7.799 in total. It's made up of two pieces. The first one is 5.88, which collects the property tax in our general fund. And the second is for the debt service on the general obligation bond, which is 1.919. Now, this is a little bit less the 1.919 than we had last year. Last year, it was 1.924. The reason for that is that we had gained a little bit in fund balance that we want to draw down. So we're asking for a little bit less there. This bill does not include any amount for estimated costs of the public safety building. That will be done separately if we get the voter approval in the election.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Rinkel? Excuse me, Director Rinkel. Councilmember Russell.
How does this compare with the mill levy in the past, in previous years?
Okay. So I can compare against last year. I didn't look back farther. The 5.88 is exactly the same amount. And the bond debt service at 1.919 is a little bit less than the 1.924 of 2016.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions?
Can I move to approval 11A1?
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Moving on to 11A3, Council Bill 33. Staff recommends council approve a proposed bill for an ordinance appropriating funds for the Little, Inglewood-Littleton wastewater treatment plant for the fiscal year 2017. Our staff source again is Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkel.
Thank you. If I may address 11A2 and 3 at the same time. 11A2 is adopting the budget for the Littleton-Inglewood wastewater treatment plant, and 11A3 is appropriating the funds for the same. This too is, let's say, a recommendation to adopt the water treatment plant budget and the appropriation. The, the budget was provided to the Littleton-Inglewood wastewater treatment plant supervisor committee on the 18th, and council reviewed it on the 22nd at a study session and again on the 29th. Public hearing was gathered to, for the input on the 2017 budget on the 19th of September. And the total appropriation and budget is $19,155,242. It is structurally balanced. It is shared, one half funded by the Inglewood Sewer Fund and one half by Littleton Sewer Fund.
Thank you for taking Council Bill 32 and 33 at the same time. I would entertain a motion for Council Bill 32 at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Moving on to 11A3, Council Bill 33. Entertain a motion on that at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Moving on to 11A4, Council Bill 34. Staff recommends council approve the proposed bill for an ordinance adopting the 2017 budget. Our staff source once again, Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkel.
Thank you.
Is he nice tonight?
I'd like to again address 11A4 and 11A5 at the same time. It is again adopting the budget and the appropriation of the funds. This is for our regular budget, and we're recommending approval for these ordinances. It was discussed at the council on the 22nd study session of August and the 29th of August study session. And a public hearing was gathered to regard, to get any input for the 2017 proposed budget on the 19th of September. We have two slight changes from the proposed budget that you saw. The first is the reduction of the city attorney budget by $63.6,000. This reflects a correction of both the city attorney, the deputy city attorney, and the relief prosecuting attorney salary and benefits. Once the council raised some questions, we went back and corrected the anomalies we had. The second item is the correction of the reserve for the Service Center Fund to reflect advancement of the fuel tank replacement from the reserve to the actual spend in 2017. This is $1,599,000. It was planned, and we just moved it into the actual budget. These changes still maintain compliance with the reserve policy and provide structurally balanced budget.
Questions from council? Seeing none, entertain a motion on Council Bill 34. Oh, Councilmember Russell, excuse me.
I do have a question. Down on the financial impact, where it talks about the total sources of funds being $91,601,698, and then the uses of funds, $98,718,882. I mean, two questions. How could that be structurally balanced if we are using more money than we're bringing in?
Bringing in. It's because there's planned spending out of the reserve for a lot of the funds, such as the donors fund, the Malle Trust Fund. So those are all included. This is not just general fund. This is all the funds together. So they've reserved money and built up the balance so that they can spend it. That spending is planned.
So there is money in the reserves. And then one question, I mean, in the, the copy of the budget that we got, it shows that the total uses of funds is $97,183,370, which it's, it's quite a bit more on the sheet that we got for tonight.
98, the...
Yeah, the $98,718,882.
You were looking at a preliminary budget, and we've adjusted some. The only...
This one?
Yes. I would have to go back to the details. The only ones I was aware of was the Service Center Fund that would have made such a huge difference, the $1,599 that we pulled forward out of reserves and into spending. It was planned, and we just didn't have it in the preliminary budget in the correct spot.
Councilmember Berentine?
With your answer to her about the, you plan to spend the reserve, then it's not reserve. If I plan to spend my savings, it's not savings. So when we put this out there and we're trying to tell people that we've got a structurally balanced budget, and in bold print, we've got a $7 million difference here, give or take, a hundred, a couple hundred thousand here or there, that's kind of a hard sell to tell the public that we've got a structurally balanced budget.
Perhaps some comments regarding reserve policy, differences between the general fund reserve policy and other funds and their reserves might be helpful there.
So the general fund, we do operate and we have a general fund balance policy. That one, we actually have little more in what we're receiving in revenue than we do in what we expended. Totally structurally balanced there. And the other funds, we're allowed to collect and grow a reserve balance and then spend it for like larger purchases such as property. You can't get that all in one year in a lot of cases. So that's an example, not probably pertinent to what they're doing this year. But those are still structurally balanced if the budget was there and planned for a certain purpose, and that is what you're spending it for.
And of those 24 funds, and I know that there were more before, and you've got the general fund and all of the, the other funds. But if you pile all the funds together and you're spending more than you're taking in, then that's still, what I'm saying is that it's a difficult sell to the public to say that that's structurally balanced.
Then I will call it balanced.
Mr. Keck, can I ask you perhaps to cover a few of the larger ticket items that are, you know, some of those capital needs that are bringing our uses of funds higher than our sources of funds?
Yeah, the general fund, as Ms. Rinkel mentioned, is structurally balanced. It is the planned expenses within those other funds. So for example, Parks and Recreation has a number of capital projects that will be constructed next year that have drawn upon the reserves. That come from such things as the Conservation Trust Fund. That's lottery monies that have come in. They'll be replacing several park, park equipment next year, as well as some park shelters. That's critical infrastructure. We also have the Fiber Dam down here at the Costa Vida Restaurant down here off of Hampden. That's going to be replaced. That's about, geez, a quarter of a million dollars replacement that's going to transpire. So there are some, those are some of the larger projects in those other funds outside the general fund that will be capital in nature that will be replaced. We also have in the Road and Bridge Fund, Dartmouth Bridge, the bridge deck will be replaced. And the roadway actually expanded to accommodate pedestrians this next year, and that's like $1.8 million. So those are some of the projects that we've been setting monies aside for that have been planned to be expended.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine, did you have further, apologize for intervening there, but I figure those would be helpful for our conversation. Anything further?
It was interesting, but it didn't...
Might not have changed your opinion. I understand. Councilmember Russell?
Then along that lines, in our reserves, do we have something replenishing the reserves? I mean, our reserves aren't going to last us forever if there's no money coming in.
If we are planning to be building something out in five years, we will set some of the revenue aside to help build that balance. In these cases, we're spending, so you don't see that. But we do that. Yes, absolutely. We plan that.
And just as a point of clarification too, it's very true that like the general fund reserve is the area that we need to be most concerned with because that's what we've been drawing money from, whether it's one-time money or ongoing monies to actually, to balance, to balance the budget that way.
Day-to-day operations.
Day-to-day operational budget. Thank you, Mayor. However, the other funds that we have, like Malle or the CTF or Parks, Parks Trust Fund, those do grow by nature of the fact that they have a revenue stream that comes in either from the state or from private donations that make them, make them run. But the general fund reserve is the one that we have to keep the most, keep our eye on the ball the most with. Otherwise, we will run into trouble. That's when we have shown you the priority-based budgeting fiscal health and wellness tool that shows 2019 is being cataclysmic if we take no action whatsoever. I referenced in the study session tonight, the necessity for us to come up with a revenue and funding model that addresses that. If we don't put the brakes on or address it, status quo is not going to help us in the general fund. The other funds should be self-sustaining and should be fine. But it's just the general fund that's going to be problematic.
Further questions for staff? Seeing none, entertain a motion at this point?
So moved.
Is there a second? Further discussion? Councilmember Russell?
I do have another question. And it has to do with the priority-based budgeting piece. Because when I asked, when we had the study session, and we were only looking really at the expenditures, if that list of things were in priority, but they're all kind of mixed together based on what people wanted, not necessarily based on what the city would need. Will that always be that way? I mean, here's my concern. There are things that we do not need to exist as a city. We don't have to have parks. Do we like parks? Yes. And if we have a lot of money, I think parks are a great thing. But if it's always based on what people want, we could get into trouble. So will it ever be, the priorities ever be based on specific needs rather than on what the community wants?
I believe I can address that. And you're absolutely right. What, what has transpired this year is that we were pushed to the limit with respect to trying to implement a new budgeting methodology. Had we had requisite time, I think we would have spent significantly more time with you as to looking at the eight result areas and specifically projects that may fall in there and programs that would fall in there, more specifically, programs, and begin to look at those and parse that data and look at what truly is, is remain to you as a council as a whole. And I think that in 2017, when we started in January to start talking about budget, we're going to talk about budget every month. You might get sick of it, but we have to because if we don't, we're going to be in trouble. You will have that opportunity then to look at those programs and services that we provide, as well as enunciate and ask the question, you know, what, what should we be in the business of providing? What should be the top priority? Should we be providing? You'll be able to give us recommendations to look at that. It's going to be a painful process, but one that we have to undertake.
I greatly appreciate that. And part of my struggle in making this decision is because I feel like we haven't had that information. And I kind of feel like at our study session, we were only given half of the picture rather than both even at that time. So I would really appreciate talking about it a lot next year because I do think this is huge.
Councilmember Russell?
I want, I want to say that I, first of all, I support this. I think that it's, it's in line. It makes sense to me. I'm, I'm a little, it's a little bit of a problem for me, Manager Keck, when you say that we didn't have enough time to do this last year. So help explain that a little bit because we have full year. Before that, we even knew we were shifting to priority-based budgeting. And what will, how will it look different? I think that the question that Councilor Russell is asking is a good one. I'm, I'm very comfortable with where we are because I've seen it done another way. I feel confident. So I'm not questioning that for you. I'm just like, when I hear that, I'm just surprised. Like, we had a whole year. So what did we do wrong in not meeting your expectations this last year and addressing it?
It's not what council has done wrong. Nobody's done anything wrong. This is an ordnantly large task. One has to understand that we've been, we've basically looked at every single service, every single program, every single position, and put numbers to it. We asked five simple questions. Is this a mandate?
Right.
You know, are we required to do this? You know, is there another service provider, whether it's public, private, or special district that can do this particular work? Then we had to put a cost to it, then we had to put staffing numbers to it. That's not something that's done overnight. So while we're flying the airplane, we're still building it. And that's not...
That makes sense.
Yeah, it's not endemic to anything that we've done or anything done improperly. That's just how you, when you switch from budgeting methodology to another, that's the process that you undertake.
So this next year then, what might we expect differently in the way we're going to approach it? I mean, you've got the infrastructure, you've decided, or we've, and we've approved whether we have all gone down that very specific road or not, that we agree with this.
Right.
So what could look different next year in this process for us then?
Well, I think what we're going to have to do is we're just going to have to follow the simple planning, you know, change, change management process. We're going to have to initiate, which we've already done. We're going to do a lot more planning this next year as well as executing. And then we're going to have to look at ways in which to make that stick. And what I mean by that is being very disciplined in how we, how we look at our budgeting. So initially, in January, what we're going to have to do is do some prioritization of programs... of programs and services that we already have within the Resource Alignment Diagnostic Tool that we received from the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting. That will actually point to some areas in which we can actually look at moving funds and ending programs. And that's the piece that gets a little bit dicey. I mean, council's going to have to make some decisions. Do we continue to, you know, keep the Malle Center and the Rec Center open seven days a week? And we're looking at, I just use those as illustrative examples, nobody panicked, that's going to change. But those are the kinds of, you're going to have to get down to that granular level of attention and give us guidance so that we can actually work on, work on those things to make sure that we are sustainable moving forward.
So that's helpful with the Parks and Recreation Commission, of course, Board and Commission.
Absolutely, they need to be involved.
Are going through that right now in their strategic plan where those, we got that presentation a few weeks ago of these analysis. Will we do that then in every area like that? Because we were seeing what the return is, whether or not we should be offering that service for the cost that it is. And will more boards and commissions get involved in this, or will be more on your level and us?
That's going to have to be more from a policy level. I think it will be a little unwieldy, and I don't say that with any malice towards those persons that serve in a voluntary capacity. But you're going to have to come and help make those prescriptions as to what level of service we're going to provide in all of those eight categories. From good governance all the way down to the other seven result areas and tell us what you as council are willing to pay for. What is the most salient programs that we need to be planning for and continuing to plan for?
I think that's what she was asking for in some ways. And so next year, that is how it will happen differently then. We really are going to be looking at programs where this year we had no time.
Exactly.
To do that level, okay.
We have 836 programs.
Right.
It's a lot of programs.
You consolidated some.
We looked at all those programs, costed them, put them through a filter. And now, now that we've had the benefit of doing that, we can actually start to drill down and say, are these as germane as we thought they were?
Thank you, Councilmember Berentine.
I'm happy to hear you say that because the groups that I met with to go over the budget, I mean, several pages of comments and things. And quite honestly, they said it needs to start a lot sooner, both for, certainly for council and then what's presented to the public so that they can go ahead and do that as well. In the, in the end, what's being presented here, if I've learned anything by ordinance Title VII and ordinance 34, it's that 10 years later, nobody remembers the arguments you made or the discussion you had. They remember what you voted on. And what I'm voting on here is pretty clear in stating that the funds that we've got are not, are way more, are way less than the funds that we're spending. And so I can't vote for this budget this year, but I know we've got plans to go ahead and make this a better process next year, so I'm looking forward to that. Thanks.
Thank you. I too would like to comment, you know, I will be supporting this year's budget. I think staff has heard fairly clearly that council is anxious to kind of dig down into the weeds and evaluate programs. I think, you know, as an organization, we were hopeful that that might come forward. But I think that what Mr. Keck outlaid as our efforts and, and, you know, rationale for why we didn't quite get there this year is understandable. To Councilmember Olson's point, I generally agree with her as well that I, you know, having done this a while and feeling very comfortable with this budget, I will be voting yes. Any further comments? Councilmember Russell?
Actually, because I'm kind of the new kid on the block and I don't necessarily understand all of this, I will be voting no. Not, I am looking forward to what's going on next year. I have been really concerned because I kept waiting for talking about priority-based budgeting, and we never got there. And so I appreciate that that's moving forward, but I will be voting no also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes be cast. At the record show, five a's and two n's, the two n's being Councilmember Russell and Berentine.
Moving on to 11a5, Council Bill 35, Staff recommends council approve the proposed bill for an ordinance appropriating funds for 2017. Our staff source again Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkle.
Thank you. I tried to cover those together, so I'm hoping that what we've talked about before will cover and cover.
Fair enough. At this time, I would entertain a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the appropriation piece of this? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes be cast. The record show, five a's and two n's, the two n's being Councilmember Russell and Berentine.
Thank you. Moving on to 11a6, Council Bill 36, Staff recommends council approve a budget for an ordinance approving charges, changes to Charter Article VII, Section 52G to combine Parks and Recreation and the Library Department and to create a Communications Department. Our staff sources City Manager Eric Keck. Mr. Keck?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of council. This particular item is being brought forward in order to be in conformance with the charter. So as we've been looking at doing some consolidations of departments and specifically creating a communications department, as been greatly discussed by this particular council, we learned that, again, an ordinance would need to be brought forward to do so. So this ordinance is really quite simple. It would authorize the consolidation of Parks, Recreation, Golf, and Library, and then also create the Communications Department. It's that simple. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Manager Keck? Councilmember Olson?
I appreciate your consolidating, I think it's a good move. What are you going to do to make sure that everyone feels like their voice is heard equally and that their needs are being met in a timely manner because they're all so different?
Yeah, so what we actually have started already, we've had several focus groups to actually obtain kind of concerns, stakeholder integration, if you will, for those people that are involved in this particular merger of departments. That focus data, focus study data will be utilized to also create a strategic plan around those concerns. So they'll be looking at the challenges that have been enunciated and the barriers, and we're going to be creating strategies to help overcome that. Communication obviously is a big piece of that to help with assuaging people's fear of how are we going to make these seemingly disparate departments of Park, Recreation, Golf, and Library come together? But it's interesting that the concerns that have been raised are all quite similar. And that is, people want, again, to be able to be, have their voices heard and have some ideas for efficiency and elimination of redundancy. So I actually see that the process that the Parks, Recreation, Golf, and Library is going to be undertaking to actually create a departmental strategy will help to overcome many of those issues that you just enunciated.
Thanks.
Thank you. Further questions for Manager Keck? Councilmember Russell?
So how does the fact that Kahoot backed out of this change this whole plan? Because you had a plan in place, and all of a sudden, the person that was the key player in this is gone.
Actually, Counselor, it doesn't change it at all. They've already provided us with a blueprint on how to move forward. And that particular blueprint identified the areas in which we, as a city, do not have the expertise, nor would we want to actually take on the overhead to actually have that. So as a result, and I am happy to talk about this a little bit later as well as I've talked to many of you on the telephone, we are and have actually prepared an RFP to go out for communication services that's surrounding those areas of the blueprint that Kahoot created for us that hopefully the open market will be able to help us with. Specifically, the Inglewood Magazine and Inglewood Presents events. That, those events include two, two events and a third yet to be named, as well as the State of the City event that would be done in 2017. We're also looking at obtaining some assistance with a marketing campaign that would be centered around, any Inglewood-centric, that would help us in any of a number of areas, including our Economic Development Department, Division, I mean. We're looking for assistance with those facets, again, that we don't have in-house capacity for. And those are things that we should be looking to the private sector to do because why replicate what they're already very well capable of doing? And so that doesn't really change our plan by the fact that one firm said they're unable, unable now to fulfill the scope of work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. That brought up another, the Kahoots brought up, is there, would you mind sending us what they sent you for their reasoning for why they couldn't continue with us?
Yes, that would not be.
I would be just interested in knowing what reasons they gave us. Thank you.
You bet.
Further questions for Manager Keck? Seeing none, entertain a motion at this time?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes be cast. The record show, seven a's.
Thank you. Moving on to 11a7, Council Bill 38, Staff recommends council approve a bill for an ordinance amending the Inglewood Municipal Code 2000 and the Rules of Order and Procedure for the Inglewood City Council to change the start time of regular council meetings to 7:00 PM effective November 7, 2016. Our staff sources City Manager Eric Keck.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is, comes on the heels of the council's consensus to look at changing the way in which meetings are conducted. So right now, Title I, Chapter 5 of our city ordinances stipulates when regular city council meetings shall be held, first and third Mondays of the month, unless there's a holiday, and then it would be the preceding Tuesday. So what we have put together as an ordinance as required by ordinance is to bring forward to you this particular change that would allow for business meetings, regular meetings, again, to be the first and third, studies on the second and fourth, with start times for your business meetings, irregular meetings on that first and third Monday to be 7:00 PM. Again, this, this particular perfunctory move by ordinance is required due to the fact that it was an ordinance that created the initial times of meeting for the city council. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
Actually, not a question, but I have more of a statement. Should I wait for a little while? Sorry.
No problem. Councilmember Olson?
Do you have a question? So I have a lot of concern about whether we can get our business done on, throughout the, with the change like this. What is your sense of it? Are you, I mean, you said obviously before that you thought we really could do it. I don't see us doing that very well. Convince me that we can do this.
I think that council, no offense to the city council or even staff for that matter, I think that we spend a lot of time talking about administrative matters in greater depth than we need to. I think what we need to do is bring those matters forward, fully studied within a memorandum to the council or council communication that enunciates to you what we're actually seeking to do. This is a perfect example. Why do we need to have a study session to talk about changing the business, or changing a meeting time? Or coming up here shortly are some proposed changes of ordinances such as the Panhandling Ordinance. Why have a study session on Panhandling when this has fully been studied and, you know, perhaps like other things out there, we just bring forward changes that are, that are, you know, vetted in the, in the legal world that we know that would make sense so that council could just make those changes rather than study something to death. Furthermore, and again, this is my opinion because I'm a guy that likes to drive fast with legislation, when it's fully studied, all the options have been looked at. Studying it doesn't help move, help us move forward and get on to the next issue. And I think we spend time on issues that we shouldn't, and we're not spending time where we should. In 2017, the focus is going to have to be on fiscal sustainability. And we need to clear the decks in order to have the time to do that and help you get focused on things, things that are, that are of a policy level and not of administrative in nature.
So with this change, your staff is going to provide more study background and data for all the things. So we've got a couple of things tonight that were just memos and nothing to support them. We've had that in the past. That's going to change with this?
It will change.
That we have that?
Yeah.
Okay, what I, yeah, okay. That's all, I'll make comments later too, but I think it's going to put work on you.
No doubt about it. But it's also very stressful for staff as it is right now to have a study session each week to be able to turn around and produce documents and council requests that, ad nauseam, it's very difficult for staff to make that change. This would allow at least a breathing room to actually allow us to slow down and to think things through so that you do get a better quality product, hopefully. I believe, again, having a study session each week also creates other issues for council, including council dynamics. So my hope is that this will help in some small measure to help with that as well.
Councilmember Berentine?
Just to reiterate what Councilmember Olson was talking about is that we've had the addition of material on Thursday after the packet is done and on Friday. And, and something as important as the operational plan to not have that included. So you think that that's going to give you the opportunity to do more of that? Because I do think we could eliminate some of that if we had that material.
Yeah.
Maybe more for us to study prior to coming and being able to have that.
That's a good, good point, Counselor. I think even with the operational plan, that's the administrative matter. I just bring that to you as a piece of information. That shouldn't have even been brought forward to the city council in a study session. Quite frankly, it should have been something that was in a packet or your council packet for you to look at. If you had a problem, you could say, listen, I disagree with you, Manager Keck, here on this particular administrative matter. What I do want to do though is say this, because of last week and because we've been juggling council meetings around, that's why the, the issue for tonight with the not having the PowerPoint in your packet occurred, that was actually supposed to occur two weeks from now, not, not tonight.
Right. I only use that as an example. I didn't mean to like out that, but I'm that specific, but it just happened tonight. But there's been things being pushed on to like Friday that aren't being put into that packet, which doesn't give us necessarily, or the public, an opportunity. I mean, similar to the council requests, the vast majority of my council requests are prompted by my bosses, the citizens, have, need some information or have something. So we certainly want to make sure that my boss has a chance to get their information answered and do that too. So if you think that's going to help.
I really do think it's going to help. And I, you know, I appreciate that. And I think it would be, I'd be hard pressed to hear a comment from anybody that says that we're not diligent in trying to get council requests turned around. We really do spend time on that. Really, what separates what the work that we do from the business world is that we work on three levels. I mean, we have the business of the city to deal with. We have elected officials to keep happy as well as the citizenry. And so that in and of itself, we do spend a lot of time to be very vigilant in ensuring that we're quick and thorough in making sure that people get the information they asked for.
And kind of to what she was alluding to, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say she, Councilmember Olson, how do you think this new schedule is going to help that?
Well, I really think it's going to help from the standpoint, again, it's really tough to try to turn around study session from week to week, from one study session to the next.
Oh, okay.
It sounds like it's not, but it gives us very little time. So for example, since we're still living under this prescription until we reach November, I'm going to have to digest what transpired tonight at our study session, looking at the study session items that are on the docket for next week. We have a short period to turn it around, basically two days. Because as you've enunciated, packets may go out on Thursday, Thursday evening. And so that doesn't leave us much time to do a qualitative review of walking through staff's PowerPoints. I've had to add additional meetings to make sure that I go through PowerPoints now so that we don't miss something, that you get accurate information in a timely fashion. And from time to time, and I apologize that we do send out information on Friday after a Thursday, thinking that many of you probably wouldn't look at the information until Friday anyway or the weekend. But still, we have a fiduciary, we've enunciated the goal for ourselves to say Thursday night is when you're going to get your packet materials. And I think that not having a study session each week will afford us maybe some additional time to plan better, be more, be more intentional about our focus on getting things out in a, in a, in a better way and better qualitatively as well. Time will tell.
I mean, to honor Scott's diligent work on all of those municipalities that I did, I did check on quite a few, and they don't do study sessions every time. So there must be some kind of process that you're, I assume that you're looking at that's going to kind of help that, help that along. So if there's anything from there, it's not unusual. It is actually very unusual the way we do it currently to have this many meetings. So I agree with you, I'm glad it's going to work for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion at this time?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Council discussion? Councilmember Yates? Did you have a comment there?
I'll pass it this way.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'd like to float the conversation of moving to 6:30. You know, if we are, you know, going to eliminate study sessions, I do think that might impact the regular sessions and load us up with more. And so just by moving it back a half hour, I'm not sure is going to accomplish the goal that we're really trying to accomplish here with this. So I'm actually advocating for a 6:30 start. Councilmember Olson?
I, I guess what I'm concerned about is that we're talking about slowing things down, right? I think that's what this is. And it's, and as long as we have, I don't, a conversation about how we do our meetings to me is something we should do a study session on. I mean, we should have a conversation about it. It's not something someone should just bring up here and decide we're going to do this. Because it affects us and how we operate. I'm, I would love to not have a study session every week. And so I'm fine with that as long as we realize we're going to slow down some decision-making. That's what it will do. And are we okay with that? That's the, that's one of the consequences we will have. And I think particularly perhaps this dynamics of this council, that's probably what will happen because we'll be all asking for more. And, and if we don't get all the information straight up, which then puts a lot of pressure on you to have everything in line, and it could really slow things down. I mean, an example of that already is the ordinance 34. I thought we had made. I thought we had made a pretty clear agreement that we were going to do that quite a few weeks ago, and now it's in November and it's on a night that we can't even do it on, which we'll talk about in a minute. But, I'm really concerned that it'll get slowed down so much that our citizens are going to be bothered by how slow it is. But, maybe we can do it. I'm willing to give it a try. I do think that some other cities that don't have study sessions all the time actually have active committee work that's putting things together as well. I know that for a fact. So, I'm not sure that we have that.
Councilmember Russell?
And I think there has been some talk that if this doesn't work, we actually can change it back at some point. Is that?
That's correct. We can always change it.
Certainly. And if I could just add some thoughts as well, you know, I will point out that we can't be making legislative decisions in study session anyway, so we would still remain with the same two actionable meetings per month that we have currently. As far as administrative direction, and that's why I think I'm advocating for a 6:30, there may be additional issues that the city manager's office may have to bring forward in a formal meeting rather than a study session type of setting. And so, that's why I do think that extra half hour would be helpful. But I think if executed properly, we still have the same number of action item, or same number of action nights, I guess I should say, and it shouldn't be slowing us down. I think if we find that it does slow us down, then we need to go back. Councilmember Yates?
Well, I think we really should try 7 o'clock first because there is an issue of the community wanting to be at these meetings, and it just makes it a more transparent and open government. The other part of it is, if we're concerned that our council meetings are going to go longer because we're not having as many study sessions, I would probably make the recommendation that we follow the rules that we already have, because that's been kind of the problem. We kind of have a, when we're up here, we tend to have kind of a free-for-all. We make comments when we're supposed to be asking questions and vice versa, and statements that should be held off till council members' choice or set at a different time. And potentially, we should probably even look at how much time each individual council member speaks. You know, there's a, a comment a while back about, you know, if somebody comes to council, they should be able to make their statement within three to five minutes or something along those lines. You know, if you go past that, a lot of times it kind of meanders down a lot of different roads. I think that same rule can basically apply to council. Then if we want to have a rebuttal over it, then we need to look at a time, well, we need to first look, are we going to allow a rebuttal? And if we are, how much time does that particular council member have? But I, I would be very much willing to follow the law, well, it's not the law, it's the rule. We talk all the time about legislative bodies passing new laws to take care of a problem when we already have laws that could take care of the problem.
I appreciate those comments about that. I do think that's something this council really needs to consider. We do have policies and procedures of future meetings on the agenda, I believe. And so, that conversation will be coming up for this council. I will refocus us, though, on the question tonight, which is more of the scheduling rather than procedure within the meeting, but I do agree that that's something we can consider. Councilmember Olson?
I have a question for you about why you're suggesting 6:30, and then a comment to say, if the meetings continue to go this late, I am not willing to, just because we took away study sessions, not to add more nights to the week at any point, just because we're behind. I would prefer that we then add, be a meeting before the regular meeting to get stuff done because I, it just does not, does not work when we decide any night of the week is now something we're all going to get a doodle for and trying to decide whether we can come. And that should not be the norm if we can't do this. So, but why 6:30?
You know, I just think that, again...
In order to let us go to midnight, or because you think we just should start earlier?
I just think if the goal is to end these meetings at an earlier time, and if we eliminate a study session, that's going to add a little bit more of agenda items or discussion items onto our, onto our agenda. And so, if we wanted to change it, I think that 6:30 would be more beneficial. I hear the concerns about our working folks in our community being able to make these meetings, and so that's why I would not be supportive of 6 o'clock. But I do think 6:30 would be kind of a happy medium that would buy us an hour. Candidly, at 7 o'clock, I was kind of thinking that I didn't think that that would require the ending of study session every week, but hearing Mr. Keck's explanation this evening, I am supportive of that. Did that answer that?
Yeah. Yeah, I think what you're saying is that you expect our meetings to go as long as they are tonight, and you just want to start them earlier.
You know, I don't necessarily try to predict the ending times of these. I think that part of the reason that...
You don't have to predict it. It's been the norm.
I'm sorry. Right now, we are having a lot of public comment. You saw this evening how many people scheduled for five minutes. You've seen how many people have been signing up for public comment. I believe that the, the, you know, root, most of the root of our extended meetings have been extended public comments, and I think that that's something that we need to adjust to be able to deal with as best we can for the public and be responsive as we can to them. It's not convenient for them to stay till midnight, as inconvenient as it is for us. And in my mind, I'm more thinking about their schedule than my own. I'm happy to stay till 1:00 AM if that's what it takes, because this is what I signed up for, and that's what I asked people to vote me for. So, I'm going to stay here until the business is done. However, I do think it's more, it's better for the public and more convenient. Councilmember Berentone?
I agree, but I, I, I agree with you. I'll stay here till midnight if that's what it takes to get the business done, but this is the people's night, and I think that we need to stay and let them have their say. They only get it three and five minutes at a time for every two weeks. And, quite honestly, I think 6:30 is too early. I mean, I wish it weren't. I mean, I would, I would go with that, but I, I saw what happened when they switched it over in Littleton, and that's, I, I happen to agree with Scott's research that probably 7:00 would be the best. Maybe even 7:30 might be a little too late. So, you know, maybe it's been a little too late, but 6:30 starts to be a little too early for people to get home, have a little supper, and come here. 6:00 apparently is too early for us to come and have, not have supper because they feed us. So, I, I just agree with 7:00. I don't mind it moving up, but...
Fair enough. We do have a motion in a second. I don't see anybody else with comment at this point. I would like to end the discussion and ask you to vote.
Votes have been cast. Records show seven ayes.
Moving on to 11 A8, Council Bill 39, Staff recommends council approve a bill for an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with South Suburban Parks and Recreation District for the construction of a bike trail on the east side of the South Platte River at West Union Avenue and West Oxford Avenue. Our staff sources Utilities Director Tom Brennan. Good evening, Mr. Brennan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm before you this evening to recommend approval by ordinance of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Inglewood and South Suburban Parks and Recs for a regional trail on the east side of the South Platte between Union and Oxford. The project necessita... The project necessitated modifications to two city facilities. The first here, this is the Union Avenue water intake. To your right, you can see the open area with the tree. This, the photo to your right is looking back the other way at it. In order to build this trail, they needed to put a retaining wall in there. So, what they're going to do is, where this wall ends, they're going to extend it down and replace this threshold. That will improve the flow characteristics of the intake. And additionally, they're going to add some safety improvements of rail and a concrete... Not very good with this. What I was going to show you was it extends the intake. It's about 110 feet of structure. And additionally, the path is going to be concrete. Right now, we, we just drive on that slope, that grass slope right there, so we have to wait for fairly decent weather. With that concrete path, it'll be reinforced, it'll improve our access for maintenance. The, the second modification to city facilities, this is the 92-inch outfall at Oxford Avenue. The trail is going to go in front of that. So, in order for them to construct the trail, they're going to remove approximately 14 feet of that 92-inch corrugated metal pipe, and they're going to replace it with a 94-inch by 94-inch box, drop it down three feet and extend it an additional 20 feet. The bike path will be on top of that. Okay. And then, this, that drop right there is about 12 feet. This new path will eliminate that with hand railings on both sides. The Union Avenue modifications were priced out at $534,000. All that cost is covered by the project. The modifications to this outfall right here is $225,000, and again, the project's going to cover the cost. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Councilmember Olson?
Does South Suburban have connecting points on both ends? Why does South Suburban want to do this?
There are connecting points at both ends. There's a bridge just south of Union, and there's a bridge at Oxford. So, you, both sides, this is just a missing section.
Well, are they just looking to do something with their money, or?
You know, I'm the staff, staff engineer on this. I was brought in because the intake facility is under utilities and also this storm sewer.
Uh huh.
I'm not aware of their master plan, but I know it was approved...
Point of clarification, Mayor and Council. I've sit on the South Platte Working Group with Councilmember Olson. This is a improvement that has been in their master plan, South Suburban's master plan for years, they just haven't had the funding vehicle. And now that they've been successful with the Great Outdoors Colorado Grant Process, they will be able to finalize this section of trail as part of their master plan.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Councilmember Berentone?
So, Arapahoe Open Space 22 funds, wasn't that a part?
No, this is, well, Arapahoe County Open Space Fund, they are going to use a piece of Arapahoe County Open Space, but the majority or preponderance of this particular project will be paid out of Great Outdoor Colorado money.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Olson?
This completes a really amazing project. It's good for all of us along the way. This is not just one entity trying to get something. It'll be a, a great asset for all of us.
Other comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I have a comment.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Gillett?
I have been waiting for this forever. Yay!
And the 94 by 94 got you kind of excited.
Four years, four years. Why are, why are we missing this part? For those who ride that trail, and I know Mr. Keck has, on a Saturday morning, it is like an interstate. So, adding, adding that side will help alleviate the traffic. If you've ever taken that little roundabout on your bicycle and have other people coming at you at 50 miles an hour, this will be a much safer route to put people through. And, in fact, we've had some accidents there. I think we had someone who was there, I, I believe it was there, but right at the, where the Mary Carter, you go down and connect with the Mary Carter. So, that will help eliminate, it'll be more safer, especially if you have, like we took, we made the mistake of taking our grandson when he was learning and took him, it was a disaster. So, I'm excited to see that this is opening, and it'll be safer for our community and add more beauty, and it's going to take us right to our, the Oxford, the place where we've got all this money and all this beauty, and so I'm excited for it.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Could I confirm the second on that?
That was Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. Votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Moving on to 11 C1, that is, Staff requests council approve by resolution of the collective bargaining agreement between the EPBA and the City of Inglewood for 2017 through 2018. The contract covers approximately 55 employees, our staff sources HR Manager Jaylene Schell. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. During the months of May and June of 2016, the city entered into successful contract negotiations with the Inglewood Police Benefit Association, otherwise known as EPBA. I'll summarize some of the significant changes to the contract. Similar to past contracts, officers will receive a market adjustment to their base wage effective 2017 and 2018 based upon a salary survey that is conducted during the fourth quarter of the previous year. Officers assigned as a field training officer or a master police officer will be compensated at a flat rate of $56 and $112 an hour respectively for each shift that they serve in this capacity. Officers that are approved for merit pay may receive up to $1,000 a year, which is a $100 increase from the previous contract. Callback pay, an increase from two hours to two and a half hours to compensate for travel time for off-duty officers that are called back to duty. An increase in annually accrual hours for the zero-to-four-year employee from 96 hours to 100 hours. An increase in holiday hours for officers in the Investigative Services Bureau from 96 hours to 100 hours to be equal with what the Patrol Division officers currently receive. An increase in personal leave hours for all members of the EPBA from 48 to 50 hours annually. And then a change in procedures to, to access a short-term disability benefit. Current practice is that employees must use accrued leave for their first day of absence if they are ill, and on the second day, they can access short-term disability at 100% of their base salary, and are not required to provide a doctor's note until after the third day of illness. Officers will now have to complete an application form and attach a doctor's note in order to access any short-term disability benefit within five days of returning to work. And then lastly, an additional benefit added to the contract states that if an officer is killed during the line of duty, that the city will pay for the cost of the funeral up to the maximum of $10,000. This amount shall be offset by any other payments provided by worker, or Colorado workers' compensation, or any other insurance agency or organization. The financial impact for these revisions for 2017 is $157,106 and $161,819 for 2018. The members of EPBA have duly ratified by majority of vote the collective bargaining agreement for 2017 through 2018. Therefore, we recommend approval by resolution for a two-year collective bargaining agreement for the years 2017 and 2018. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Votes have been cast. Records show seven ayes.
Move on to 11 C2, this is a resolution conditionally approving the service plan for Ironworks Village Metropolitan District. This exact language was included in the packet under Agenda Item 10A. I'd entertain a motion at this time.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Were the exhibits included here that are referenced in the resolution? I see, um, on the first page of the resolution, Section 2 describes attachment A have been fulfilled and found to be acceptable.
Probably, we're talking about Ironworks?
Yes.
It was probably the Ironworks, um, at 10A would be the exhibit, exhibits, right?
Thank you. Did you have some information there perhaps?
Yeah, Megan Murphy on behalf of the applicant from White Bear Ankle. Exhibit A is the service plan, which was provided in the packet, I hope.
Okay, thank you.
And the service plan does have a number of exhibits.
I just saw Exhibit A versus attachment A. I got a little confused, I think.
The service plan has a number of exhibits that are also included, but they are just forms of agreement, so they're not fully executed.
Thank you. Sorry, did we have a motion in a second already? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Votes have been cast. The record shows seven ayes.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 12, we have Councilmember's Choice. Would you like to kick us off? Mayor Pro Tem Gillett, would you mind?
Tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
I just have one thing.[1767.53]
I would like to state that I still stand behind my objection this evening. It was not an issue of being illegal in what we did. It was a, it was an issue that had to deal with, yeah, now I'm going blank on the word, guidance issue. And there is a lot of information that is behind that whole thing, that makes it more of a guidance issue than a legal or we broke the law issue, because I still do not believe that we actually broke the law. We may not have done things the best way, but I'm gonna stand on my earlier statement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Olson?
I have a couple of things. One is, I am concerned, I brought this up just a few minutes ago, that November 14th is the date that we're slated to discuss Title VII, Ordinance 34 in particular, but Greg Peaburn, Peaburn, I don't know how you say his name, is scheduled then at the same time. And so I really, when I voted against the moratorium, it was with a full understanding that that following Monday night, we were gonna have a conversation about this and really think it through and try and bring something forward. That did not happen because it got derailed through a lawsuit and a number of ways in which that got interpreted. I'm really uncomfortable with how far out we have pushed this, and I'd like to see us, I guess my question tonight is, what's the plan for moving it from the night that we just decided on for the team building, or team whatever?
We'll try to, we'll try to get it before then at the mayor-manager meeting tomorrow.
Okay. All right, so then the second...
I would like to, I apologize, real quick, I would like to hear other councilmember comments, is that also the desire of other councilmembers to kind of get this sooner rather than later?
Absolutely.
Is that everybody? I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, so we will make that happen. We will make that happen tomorrow.
I really do think we made a commitment here to, and that, I mean, it got derailed and for a number of reasons that we all can argue about, but it's really important for us to get this going. I would be glad to wipe next week's off and make that the issue. Or I might have to join in. Anyway, the second thing I have is the leakage piece, leakage study isn't quite what I mentioned earlier in the study, in the study session, but there is so much opportunity and I, in the city with MOA and other kinds of things, and I'm wondering to what extent, Eric, can we help you in our community development department? People kill me for saying this, but even funding that helps with capturing what we know is here, and maybe that really is the Chamber of Commerce and our retail districts to really get on the bandwagon and realize what they have here and help support them in utilizing and mining what's coming into the city for their businesses. Not all, I mean, industrial doesn't matter if somebody comes to an MOA opening or anything like that, but it seems like there's so much there, and I'm sure they've been talking about it in community development, I just wanna support it and say, let's do what we can to really capitalize on what's going on here. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
I spent some time previously downtown and had brought up about some of the lights, especially in the 3400 block, there were more than three of them out, well, three plus the XL. And I believe when I was coming home the other night that they look like they have been fixed. They weren't dimmed, they were actually out. I had to go back and with the business owners resolve the issue between dim and out, but we all agreed they were out, and now all of a sudden they're working. So I wanted to tell Dave Henderson, thank you for getting that worked on, and I know that the business owners have said that XL has been down there. I wasn't able to go to the meeting, maybe Councilmember Russell will, I think she went to that business meeting that she had, but I did have an opportunity to talk to some of them about the business meeting that happened last, this past Monday, that's like, feels like a month ago. And really, I'm understanding the need for them to have that temporary crosswalk with the Lexus version of it ADA compliant, everything going good at 50,000. We sneeze that out some days. We have a few places that we could recoup some of that, I think, but, and to recoup 10,000 of that for the permanent, that would only bring that at 40,000, and to go ahead and start utilizing the 150 spaces that are on the east side of the street and make it safe, because I spent some time down there and there's a lot of pedestrians that are walking across there, where somebody's gonna get hurt. So we really need to move on this sooner than later because they are really seeing some reduction in their, in their businesses, and I don't think we're trying to build a downtown and high-density down there and then have businesses going under. They have huge investments down there and would really like to see some support, and I think just a 50,000, well, 40,000, you know, that we might not be able to recoup, might be a real good way. Plus, they came up with that if we've got flashy lights and construction cones and stuff, that's almost like advertising, slowing them down. They'll know something news going on and that we've got some activity going on down there, and they'll maybe stop, not wanna be in traffic and go to Bob's and have a beer and enjoy themselves, so. But I'd really like to find out next week or pretty soon what all came out of all of that so that we move forward. And again, congratulations to our business owner over there on T-Hone for saving another Inglewood life, and if I ever am in a restaurant, a particular, maybe Asian restaurant, that I would go ahead and make sure I had a retired firefighter on me, that was pretty cool that they did that, that was awesome. And thank you very much to the mayor for recognizing that, I think that was pretty sweet.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell.
Actually, Councilmember Berantine reminded me, I have two whole pages of notes from that meeting down there, and, no, I'm not gonna go over all of it. I am not.
That was the uh-oh.
But just to say this, and I talked to a few of the business owners after, after the meeting, and some of them said, and I kinda get this, that government does not think outside the box. And they, some of those businesses, I do believe this, that if we don't do something soon, they will close their doors. And like Paul said, he's been in business three years, he can weather the storm a little bit, but like Palango cannot. And, and so they really need that temporary crosswalk, and he, his idea is put up a few cones and some flashing lights, and you don't, I mean, do we really have to make it ADA compliant immediately if that is in the plans?
No, we don't have to. I think it was, when you have engineers design something, they're engineers, and they designed it to meet the law. I think the concern was if we go ahead and put a crossing in there and someone were to not be able to use a ramp and then hurt themselves, they would sue the city. So having said that, I just met with Dave Henderson today, we're pushing forward to do a cross, a light version of the crossing that's gonna have asphalt, we have asphalt crews, they can do the work right here. So I'll have a schedule for when this is gonna be done. Dave promised to have it to me this week. Soon as I get that, I'll get it to you as council. But just understand, to get to the point where we are today, it's amazing. So to say that we're not able to move quickly is, I get it, you know, the old six guys in the shovel and one guy working analogy, but, you know, we're working as best we can to make sure that we get this put in, and it'll happen this fall.
Right, I appreciate that. And the truth is, they weren't, they weren't necessarily complaining, but the message that they got that day was, it'll be the first of the year, and that, you know, when you're losing money. So, and the interesting thing is, a lot of those businesses are very excited about the high-density that's coming down there. And so, anyway, it was a very good meeting. And I do, I have another question. These interviews tomorrow with the Urban Land Institute thing, why are we doing them individually? Because we all govern as a body, and so why is this not being done in a study session type situation?
Because we're running out of time for study sessions. No, I think this was, this was a design, this is a model that the Urban Land Institute has utilized before for this particular technical assistance program, and I think that they, they do wanna get one-on-one perspective rather than group, group think on a project. We just talked about government and group think. But I think that it's their desire to have individual interviews, just to pick your brain and see what your thoughts are. Obviously, there will be opportunities for them to share their findings in the report, which we will have videographed, by the way, thanks, Councilmember Berantine asked to do it, and we're happy to do that, to share with the community and the public. But that's just what their model was when they asked us, they thought that would be more efficient use of time as well as try to schedule another meeting at the council as a group.
I'd have to agree, that gives everybody a chance to give their opinion.
I disagree.
You do.
Anything else, Councilmember Russell?
I do not have anything else. Thank you.
Moving on to mayor report, I'm really proud to say that last Thursday morning, I was able to deliver an opening statements to what I hope is gonna be a first of our annual job fairs. I thought it was really a resounding success. We had over, I'm sorry, we had 32 local businesses represented, most of our largest employers were represented. They had over 500 jobs available that day. It's a wonderful opportunity to provide recruitment opportunities for our local businesses as well as job opportunities for our local residences, or local residents, I should say. And I think it helps us attract both residents and workers, and helps match our residents and our workers, I'm sorry, our workers with our local businesses and vice versa. So really proud to see that come to fruition, I really think that we should really be proud of this and celebrate this and hopefully help advertise it a little bit more next year. Do we have a total number of attendees perhaps, Mr. Keck?
It's pretty slim.
You know, I know that they only had, I wanna say about 100 preregistered, but I'm hopeful that throughout the day, I did stick around most of the morning there and saw lots of folks just kind of coming in and out. So I'm hopeful that, you know, we got close to 500, but I'm not so sure we met that threshold. So I think that, you know, we need to do probably a little better job, we did a great job of outreach to our businesses, get their participation. We need a little bit more activity in marketing this to our residents so that they know that there's job opportunities here. You know, I think that might be one of the rare situations where there were more jobs than people, and so that's an interesting dynamic. You know, Councilmember Yates, I appreciate your comments regarding the point-of-order issue you raised earlier. I do agree that, you know, we haven't done anything illegal. I guess my only point was, is that I believe Councilmember Berantine is, has a right to her opinion about whether or not our activities were legal or illegal without the guiding opinion of a binding court opinion. Moving on to Councilmember Russell's comments regarding our local businesses, I believe that a healthy skepticism of government is generally a good thing, so, you know, keeping us all on our toes isn't necessarily the worst thing in the world, so, thank you again. I'll conclude mayor's choice, I'm sorry, I do have memorandum. What was it? What was her question?
When are we gonna do the 34?
Oh, I answered that. We're gonna get it scheduled tomorrow. No problem, we're gonna get it scheduled tomorrow at the mayor-manager meeting.
We're not having it tomorrow, he's gonna schedule.
Yeah, I'm gonna schedule it tomorrow, and I'm gonna try to get it sooner rather than later based on the feedback I got this evening. So if we can get it next week, you know, I can't promise that yet, but we'll work on getting it as soon as possible, is what I've heard fairly loudly and clearly this evening. You know, there was a memorandum on calling the questions, I believe that was disseminated in our packet. You know, there was some discussion about, you know, calling of questions, and right now, our council policy says that once somebody calls the question, the question should be called. It's silent on the issue of whether or not councilmembers should be able to weigh in. You know, checking out Roberts rules, there is a suggestion there that two-thirds are required to close the discussion. So I feel like I'm having to kind of make a subjective call on whether or not to exclude councilmembers without the guidance of our policy. So I guess I'm asking council to consider this at a future date, perhaps at our retreat or some other areas when we're discussing policies and procedures of our future meetings, that this is, you know, something that I think we should give some guidance on, not just to me, but to future councils as well, rather than remaining silent on that issue. Any feedback on that at all?
I think we should talk about it.
Yep, that's what I'll, again, we'll discuss it. City managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, as a result of hearing from Kahoots last week that they're gonna be unable to fulfill our scope of work that we prepared, staff, when I see staff, I mean myself, Allison Carney and Murphy Robinson sat down and looked at the blueprint that they had given us and figured, what is it that we can do in the scope versus what, you know, we have capacity for versus what we would need somebody else from the private sector to help us with? We came down to basically four areas. So number one is, we need help producing the Inglewood Magazine as well as the Inglewood Presents events, so that's one major category. Number two, we wanted to have some assistance, obviously, in creating and launching a Inglewood-focused marketing campaign that utilizes the existing brand and formalizes, you know, an annual sponsorship package to make sure that that happens. Number three, we wanted to have some specific and intensive support of the Parks Recreation Library and Services Department in their communications and marketing, because again, that has a specific return on investment with the number of people that sign up for classes and utilize our facilities, whether that be the Recreation Center, the Malle Center, or aquatics. And then lastly, again, we were looking for some assistance to, you know, have some help for some targeted, targeted creation of product that we don't have in-house creative design work for. So what we'd like to do is, as soon as practicable, is send out an RFP to suggest that people respond to an RFP, and that way we can continue to move forward with the goals of delivering on the report the Kahoots company gave to us on how to move forward with our communications. As I've stated, internally, we've made some changes. I'm pleased and proud of Allison Carney who applied and went through a process to receive the communications project manager's role, and so that's exciting. But at the same time, I think there's some other things that we can do internally, knowing that we have a little bit of a capacity that Kahoots was recommending they were gonna do, I think we can do that ourselves and reduce the amount of monies that we have to expend externally and do the work internally. So I just wanna make sure that you were aware that we are desirous of going out to bid for this.
Thank you. City attorneys' report?
Oh, kind of.
Sorry, did you have, Councilmember Berantine?
Are we gonna be able to see it?
Yep, I have our copy right here if you'd like.
I appreciate it. So you said you've made a lot of, some changes to what it was that we had done with Kahoots and that you're gonna, it's gonna be less money, you're gonna do some internally, and that's what this is gonna?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that. You had this ready.
Yeah, well, I meant to hand it out earlier and it's been a long night.
That's okay. I mean, you told us you would have that, okay. So this'll just kind of go over the stuff that you just said about the changes, what you're gonna adopt from Kahoots, what you're looking at from an outside place and what you're gonna do inside.
This particular, this is the actual RFP that's gonna go to the outside world.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
That's fine. Thank you. Thanks for doing it.
Thank you. City attorneys' report?
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Sam.
I have a pen.
See ya. Good evening.